Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council, the December meeting. Happy holidays and our very best for the upcoming new year. Let's start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, come to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the island, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call will show that all the council members are here. All right, folks. Shhh. Thank you. The roll call will show that all the council members are here. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting?
So moved.
Goddard and Larry. At this time, we will talk about the closed session. We met with various legal counsel. We received advice. We gave no action. And we'll move on now to the regular agenda. Garrett, do you want to take us on number one, adoption of Resolution 14-43?
Perhaps that'd be better for the town clerk.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the adoption of a resolution reciting the fact of the general election that just happened a month ago, declaring the result, and other matters as required by law.
Anything else you want to report on that? I see that Measure J and K passed resoundingly.
Yes, they did.
Excellent news there. And we've now -- somebody want to make a motion to recite the fact of the election, then we'll go to the public and see if they have a thought.
I just have one suggestion is that Measure J also included the general municipal tax. So I would suggest on Section 5 of the resolution that we say that Measure J approving the five-year renewal of the general municipal and, and then have the rest.
Okay. With that addition, why don't we see if this public comment on this resolution, would anybody like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment on that and bring it back. Barbara, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution with the change I just recommended.
Do we have a second on that?
I would second.
Okay, we got Kohler, Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Excellent. Moving on now to number two, the reorganization of the town council. I first want to just take a brief moment in a very challenging year to say thank you very much to the public. It was, as always, a great privilege to serve, also to staff for their extraordinary support for the council and the town during this period, and also to my colleagues. And with that, I would say, Renee, would you like to speak to the reorganization? Start on your side.
Yeah, so what I understand that we're doing now is that we are, as our vice mayor is moving forward in his life to take a position on the Marin Municipal Water District Board, we now have the opportunity to instate a new mayor and a new vice mayor. So I've thought at length about this, and what I've come to is this moment in which I would like to nominate my fellow council member Barbara Kohler to fill the seat of mayor for the coming year.
I'd second that.
Then we have a motion in a second. Let's see if there's public comment on that. Would anybody like to speak to the selection of the new mayor, which would be Barbara Kohler? Seeing none, we'll close the --
There's comment.
As always, Sierra, please join us. You have to come to the microphone.
I just want to offer myself as mayor to save you guys the trouble of --
Yeah, that ship sailed. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Renee, and I think Larry seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, you are the mayor of Fairfax. Twenty feet from start.
Where's the camp?
There you go.
First of all, I would like to thank my fellow council members and also the town of Fairfax. And now I'd like to -- it's time now to nominate the vice mayor.
I'll nominate Renee.
Okay, so with that, we have David Weinsoff making the motion, Larry Bragman seconding, and all in favor?
Aye. But we should probably have a little public comment.
I did that.
Nobody wanted to speak to it?
No. Thank you, David. Okay, congratulations. So before we move on, I would also like to thank David for serving for the last year through what has been at times a very difficult year. And also, thank you to our citizens in Fairfax who have sat through so many of these meetings and really stepped up and expressed their views and helped us to get through some of these difficult decisions. I'd also like to take this opportunity, before we go to the break and celebrate, to do a couple of things. And I will present David and Larry with some gifts. But before I do that, I just want to thank -- I'm going to cry. Thank Larry Bragman. I've had the honor of serving alongside Larry as a Fairfax council member, and I have seen him in action. He's thoughtful, reasoned, does his homework, and is a true statesman. He works to understand all perspectives and truly represents the citizens of Fairfax with openness, honesty, and integrity. When I first heard of his announcement to run for the water district, my thoughts were what a huge loss for Fairfax. And my next thoughts were what a tremendous gain for the water district, and now it has come true. Larry has been a Fairfax council member for 11 years and has served us well. His judgment is impeccable. He works effectively to achieve solutions which benefit our environment, are socially just, practical, and reasonable. I will miss him as a member of our council, but I'm sure the water district will be better having him as a board member. Larry, thank you for all your years of service to Fairfax. Larry Bragman, with, in appreciation of your leadership and dedication to the town of Fairfax, it's a sustainable bamboo hat.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'm sure Larry wants to say a few words, but maybe we'll wait till -- shall we do that after I present this to David? So to David, I'm presenting this to you in appreciation of your leadership to the town of Fairfax. And then we have a quote, "Just because you got the monkey off your back doesn't mean the circus has left town." George Carlin. Thank you very much, David.
That is very good.
I'm glad that was relatively short. But I did want to just thank everybody because it's really been an incredible privilege to serve the town of Fairfax since 2003. And one of my longer relationships I've ever had, and probably, probably, probably really one of the best relationships I've ever had professionally or personally. And really, you know, Fairfax, the staff, and really the town has been the extended family that I don't have. And it's just a very unique jurisdiction. And I just typed a couple things up that I just want to read, just so you get my thoughts and you can take, do with them what you want. But I was introduced to Fairfax by my brother, Richard, 35 years ago, and spent many days with him hiking in Cascade Canyon and many nights oversampling the nightlife here in Fairfax. And much to my surprise, I'm still doing the same thing, although these days I also get around the trails on mountain bike. Fairfax is a unique place that is burdened and blessed by its location and its topography. These features have deterred development and population growth, but it's also encouraged the development of a small community of tolerant free thinkers who reside in its houses, and this is a statistical fact, you can look at the latest census, for far longer than average for other Marin communities. In other words, once people get here, they stay here. And there's a reason for that because it provides a direct, it's a small community, and it gives people the opportunity to have a tangible stake in the outcome of the decisions that we make here. And it also gives people the ability to see one another as they come and go. And that's very, very important, that people are familiar with each other and recognize each other because that kind of informal relationship is part of what community is all about. So as I take my leave tonight, my hope for Fairfax, for the Fairfax Town Council, is to have the confidence and competence to listen to the voices of the residents and not be swayed by the overwhelming pressure to conform and comply with the status quo, whether it's with our housing element, compassionate use, pesticides, or even our utility meters. We may not win every battle to maintain our independence, but it's oftentimes more important to challenge the conventional wisdom than to concede to conformity. The council needs to take its time to test and independently verify most matters that come before it. It also needs to continue to welcome all who come before it with the presumption of respect, although skepticism is permitted with reasonable proof. I've had the privilege of serving Fairfax for 11 years, best client I've ever had. The office I take has great challenges, and that's really the reason I ran for the office and was lucky enough to win the office. But it's not really a higher office than the town council. I don't think there is any higher office that I could ever hold than to be on this council. And I will hopefully take the values and integrity of this community with me when I go to my next office, but will remain forever really grateful to Fairfax. So thank you very much.
So now, we are going to take about a 10-minute break. Oh, we're going to do open time after the -- we're going to do open time after the break, and then you can also provide feedback on Larry or other things. So I just want to say to everybody, there's refreshments in the back. Let's take a 10-minute break. This will be to thank David for his year of service as mayor, wish Larry well, and celebrate his new life at the water district, and also just celebrate all of Fairfaxans and all of you who have come here tonight and braved the rain. Thank you. So we'll do 10 minutes. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and do the announcements. One vacancy on Park, one on the Fairfax Open Space Committee. Submit your applications at Town Hall. You can also find applications on the Town website. The Holiday Craft Fair is Saturday, September 13th at the Pavilion from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. Also, holiday wreath-making caroling and potluck, Sunday, December 14th at the Women's Club, right here, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. More holiday, holiday horse and wagon rides on the parcade steps, Sunday, December 14th, 11:00 to 2:00, so you can do the horse and wagon rides and then go right into the wreath-making caroling and potluck. Also, the Town Hall will be closed December 24th through January 2nd, reopening Monday, January 5th. The Fairfax Food Pantry, Saturdays, 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church on Sir Francis Drake. Volunteers are always needed, and that's a great event and does a lot of service for our community. So those are the announcements unless there's anything else. Renee?
I wanted to announce that on Saturday night, Sustainable Fairfax will be hosting our annual benefit, our fundraiser. It will be held at the Marin Mountain Biking Museum. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. Wonderful silent auction, great food, all locally sponsored, donated, yummy things to eat. Please come if you can. It promises to be a great evening. So thank you. And you can go online to Sustainable Fairfax and purchase your tickets there or come to the door. Thank you.
Just another quick announcement, the Chamber of Commerce is having their Christmas party December 9th, and you can go on their website if you're interested in participating in that, which will be another good event. So we're going to move into open time for public expression, three-minute time limit per person. This is time set aside for people wishing to address the council on matters not listed on the agenda. So, and if you would, if you would like to provide your name and address, which are optional, reminder, three minutes to speak. Thank you. And reminder that we cannot take action on any of the items you raise.
Hello, Mayor Kohler. How does that feel? Anyway, just --
That was great, thanks.
I put out an email throughout my pretty extensive email list to people, just reminding them that this was going to be Larry's last night because I didn't know if very many people understood that. And I got deluge of the most wonderful things, which I couldn't even print them all out, but I printed out a number of them. I'm going to put them back there. Maybe you want to take them home with you, I do not know. Anyway, so I just wanted to say goodbye for here. I felt a little schizophrenic when you decided to run, I have to say, but I think we have a lot to be thankful for. You might want to close your eyes for all these things because I think you're going to get a little overwhelmed pretty soon. So Larry's been with us for so long and accomplished so much for our community. He has spearheaded many progressive actions and written and co-written much progressive legislation now used by many communities around the country and maybe around the world. He has been a thoughtful, compassionate, and kind listener, has included the community in decision-making in a way not seen in many years. His leadership qualities will enable him to do whatever he is called to do in this world. Following in the progressive leadership of Fairfax's Frank Agar, he has been a hard-working, brave, articulate, and reasoned voice for us since he took office in Fairfax 11 years ago. Among his many accomplishments, first and foremost in my mind, was his courageous stance against the attempted illegal installation of smart meters in Fairfax. Because of Larry, we have an ordinance in force today that allows Fairfax residents to say no to smart meters and to not pay opt-out fees levied by PG&E against our neighboring communities. I hope at some point the supervisors will find the backbone to do the same thing and enforce the resolution that they have. This ordinance is enforceable by law in Fairfax. If PG&E attempts a forced installation, Fairfax citizens can call the police to stop it. This ordinance is now a model across the country for communities fighting against forced installation of electric, water, and gas smart meters. Even though we have lost him from our council, we now have someone on the MMWD to help us in our fight against smart water meters should the MMWD ever be so unwise as to attempt to approve them again. We will now have our first-ever voice against added toxins in our water and on our watershed, including Monsanto's glyphosate, whose patents include desiccant and persistent pesticide and herbicide, and the addition of chloramine and hydrofluoric acid, otherwise known as fluoride. It's a more contaminated kind that we now have in our water. So when the public stands up and demands that the precautionary principle be enforced, thank you so much, Larry.
Hi, BB Newton, 139 Mono, and I sound really bad, but I just have allergies, so I'm going to make this brief. First off, I want to thank David for being mayor over the last year and shepherding the town through some really rocky waters. I know I'm mixing metaphors, but I wanted to, on behalf of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, give you a little token, their redwood sorrel, which looks like sort of a purple shamrock.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And next, Madam Mayor, just so happy to see you there, and I know this is going to be an excellent term for you, and I have a little token from the Fairfax Open Space Committee. Not a bribe or anything, just a token.
That'll go with the hundreds of other ones I have.
I know. And last but never least, Larry, I just can't even express enough how fabulous you've been as council member, former mayor. It's just, I bow down. I really am humbled by your competency, your knowledge, your eloquence, all sorts of things, and just forever grateful for everything you've done for the town. And on behalf of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, we have a little redwood tree for you.
Mayor and members of the jury, I want to start with, this is a dollar for Barbara. It's a bribe.
Thank you.
I'm going to expect you to end this war as globally and fund education and healthcare.
Can be done in the next six months.
Anyway, I just want to say thank you, Larry, for it's been a good show. Larry's stood up and basically done what he's thought and feels is right. And I think too few of us can stand up to a lot of opposition and uncomfortable people or whatever that disagree with us. And where the truth is or what's right on any issue is a matter of debate, but how do we even have the debate? Or how do we even, how do we have the debates without, as Americans, we tended to shoot each other over issues rather than even having the debates. It's like, for example, I keep hearing about Obamacare in the media. It's like, screw it, it's not Obamacare, it's healthcare. And even calling it Obamacare diminishes healthcare for everybody, even the whole conversation. And Republicans, Democrats, you know, asses elephants, whatever. It's not building a conversation, it's not building community. And I really appreciate Larry and pretty much everyone in the council for having the conversations and working together. Other than that, where do we go from here? We need to appoint someone else to Larry's office. And I've been thinking about who I'd like to see get the position. I've been looking around town, just like people I know, people I don't know. And I'm a little bit of a loss. It's a little bit of a hole there. But I do want to say what I would like to see in the position is how about somebody between 18 and 30? Where's the voice of the youth? I mean, sure, it's like, we don't have maybe the experience or the vision or the articulation when we're young, but damn it, the world that we as adults and old people are leaving for the youth or any other life form for the future is pretty dismal. Our world's all about money and ownership and splitting, you know, crossing eyes and drinking teas or, you know, crossing teas and dotting eyes, I don't know why. But how do we get some youth into the decision-making process? Because it's going to be their future and their planet, and we're pretty much wiping things out. I'd also like to just close with saying, here we are at the Toys R' Us time of year again, which, to a degree, I kind of hate because it's not about spirit, and it's not really even about giving, it's about expectations, and everyone's driving around buying crap that's going to end up in the landfills and doing it on debt. And I'd suggest if we really want to give gifts to each other or to the youth of the future, don't go out and buy crap. Go out and spend time with people because all the stuff that we're buying going into the landfill, it's just polluting the water, messing up the air, wiping out the earth. It's like, are we really giving things if we're just giving a bunch of material stuff that's going in the landfill? Anyhow, thank you, Larry, thank you guys, and let's get some youth up there.
Thank you.
My name is David Glick. I live at 297 Cascade Drive. So Larry, you've been on the council for 11 years. A lot of us have been wondering, just what the hell have you done about the fact that the polar ice caps are melting and we still have mass surveillance and there's a growing wealth gap? And we're wondering, what have you been doing up there? Because we had big expectations of you, and you've really failed us. So, but you've done a pretty damn good job here in Fairfax. And in all seriousness, I think all of us here are really proud of you. You've really been an inspiration to many of us, and you've really helped this town to grow into the kind of town that it is, and a town that has deep values, deep progressive values, and deep environmental values. And you've been the epitome, you've really been the stalwart who's carried that banner. And we thank you, even though you screwed up on all the other things. All right.
Thank you.
Jane Richardson-Mack, 49 Badron Road.
Jane, you can lower it.
I wasn't going to be here that long. Anyway, I just wanted to say, based on your record, your grace under pressure, your wisdom, your heart, your wise counsel and guidance, that I hereby would like to nominate Larry Bragman for president of the world.
Thank you, Jane. So Supervisor Rice.
Hi, good evening. Here for three reasons. One, to thank David for guiding this town. I've watched from afar and read the newspaper from afar and really been impressed with how well you handled what has already been characterized. It's a pretty challenging year, and you did an excellent job, and I think the whole town is proud of you, and I'm certainly proud of you as well, if that's appropriate. Larry, wanted to thank you and congratulate you on your way out to the water board and for the 11 years of service here. I have also watched and been impressed by how you handle the position, and this is a tough job these folks have, and they all do it with aplomb, and I wanted to add my congratulations to you and thanks. And then Barbara, looking forward to working with you in the year ahead as mayor. So anyway, thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Katie. Anybody else wishing to speak in open time?
Jim McDermott, Marin Stables. Larry, thanks for all you've done for the community. Absolutely wonderful. Absolutely wonderful work. The Sky Ranch thing's coming up, can you hear me okay?
So, open time is for matters not on the agenda? We will have time to talk on Sky Ranch?
Right, I'm just going to talk about history, so not the Sky Ranch specifically. So, there are 56,840 horses in captivity by BLM lands. Three to 4,000 years ago, the horse started here in North America. If there was no North America, there wouldn't be horses. And that's why, when horse issues come up, we're very sensitive about it, we want to keep them a part of the landscape. I can't tell you when I ride my horse out on open space or Water District lands, the thrill of the kids and the families petting them, greeting them, is he a boy or is he a girl? And there's a connection, human to human, other than just a curt good morning or no acknowledgement at all. And I thank Fairfax for its considerations and all you've done for Marin Stables, and I'd like to also keep the horses part of the landscape of Marin County, and it seems like Fairfax is holding its end up. So thank you very much, happy holidays.
Thank you.[683.82][683.82](APPLAUSE). Alexander?
Alexander Binix, Seven Meadow Way. Larry, I saw Valerie had sent out an email already listing many of, seeing other people that thought of your accomplishments in these 11 years. I added a number of other suggestions, I'm sure, that if they were all to be read out now, not only would it possibly embarrass you, but it would take a good part of the evening. So rather than do that, I just want to say, I was glad I got here in time to hear your statement before. One of the things, you talked about a couple of things that resonated with me, independent point of view and respect. And to me, those are a couple of things, you know, besides all the things that you have accomplished and helped the town to accomplish and achieve, the process, the way that you've participated in that, I think has been so admirable and so touching to me. And, you know, that willingness to look at things perhaps outside of the box and to try to make a reasoned debate and decisions, but also in a very collaborative way. From what I've seen, both in your tenure on the council and the other agencies you've been a part of, that's always been a part of it, and very respectful, and I think that really is something special, and I want to thank you for that. And I, it seems to me that you've not only helped this town to continue without going downhill, and perhaps to improve in some ways, but I was thinking of the metaphor of helping the town to flower, so I have a little something.[810.38][810.38](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Alexander. Rose?
I'm Rose Tabor from 94 Hillside Drive in Fairfax, and there's nothing left for me to say. David, thank you. Larry, thank you. I'm going to let something out, when I first met you, you are a young man.[846.19][846.19](LAUGHTER). I think I've known you longer than anybody in here, so, but thank you for all you've done through the years, and, you know what, I have to thank the whole council, we have a pretty good council, even if I yell a lot. But I'm here to do some, I don't know if you're aware, you know, we were without power today in Deer Park area, well, yeah, in that area. And like today and a few months ago, when power is out, our landlines used to be our lifelines, not anymore. Our phones, landlines are dead, and at times that could include landlines, cellphones, internet, if you were on a computer. And there's no way that you can call help for help. So cellphone use is unpredictable, if we can get it at all. Do not think of having a heart attack or stroke or a serious injury, you can't call anybody during that time. It's scary. And ambulance, forget it. There's no way to call any of them. So I don't know what the council can do to help us, but there must be something.
I have an idea for you, because I've maintained a hard copper wire line in the house, which is not connected to an answering machine, so it doesn't have to be plugged in. I have chatted with AT&amp;T just for sport over the years, and they charge me, depending on the year, somewhere between $6 and $12 a month, which is not a heck of a lot of money for the kind of protection that you're sort of seeking. So I might recommend to you, you can go to Radio Shack and buy a phone like this for like $10, and put it in the corner, and then call AT&amp;T, tell them you're a senior citizen, I'm taking a gamble here, and suggest to them that you would like the rate of $6 per month, and see what they say.
You've got to be kidding, call AT&amp;T? How many, you know, there's not that many...[969.13][969.13](LAUGHTER).
I'm not that persuasive, but I did it.
No, honey, I don't have that many hours left in my life, believe me.[975.82][975.82](LAUGHTER).
Rose, David's correct, I have an old phone that plugs in, so it can't be one of those ones that you, a landline that you walk around the house, those don't work.
No, 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 no.
An old-fashioned phone that plugs in, they do work. I've had many power outages, I live in West Fairfax, and you can call PG&E or whoever.
We could not even call PG&E to tell them that we were without electricity, and I had to find my cellphone to be able to do it. But our landline, and it's an old one, let me tell you, it's probably as old as my own, and it did not work today. It was dead.
Okay.
And I...
If it's a copper wire line, it doesn't go dead.
Yeah, well, I think...
Yeah, but why should we...
Rose, at the bottom of your hill today, a tree did fall and take out the wire.
Right.
So it is an unusual circumstance.
No, it's not that. That is, I know there's an emergency type of thing, but why, you know, we just passed our new, for, I'm sorry.
It was Measure J you're referring to? One of the things we could suggest is maybe David could talk to you offline a little bit about this, since he seems to know more about than I.
There are other people in town, I'm not the only one, but I think that if these people are going to bring in service, I think they should cover us for these emergencies.
Well, Garrett, can you maybe just look into this? It's not, I'm not clear that there's anything we can do about this, but look into what kind of advice we can provide to folks, maybe we can put it on the website, more about how this works, and maybe as part of your town manager's report next month, if we do have any helpful advice, we can offer that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kara, you've already done an open time.
I know, I just have a point to make about the phone service, and that is AT&amp;T and other phone services, even if you have a copper-lined phone in your house, if they come in and upgrade you to U-verse or other electronic internet bases, your phone may not work with the electricity because it goes through a different setup outside before it goes into your house.
Okay, well, Garrett will report out next month, because he's a very creative guy. So Holly.
Holly Bragman, Hickory Road. Since we're solving problems during open time, can I just quickly say, I think it's the third time I've asked about enforcing the no parking across from the coffee roastery during the hours, that you're not supposed to park there because it backs up the traffic on Bellinas of the people who want to turn left and the people who want to, anyway, so...
Quick interlude, so Garrett, you're marking that down so you can talk to the chief about that, and that would be another thing you can...
Third time. I've...
I'm the mayor now, Holly. And we'll see if we can get that moving for us.
There you go. And then I made a card, I made it really big, and so I'm going to leave it out front, I know a lot of you have already signed it, it's for Larry. And on the front is just whatever, his bumper sticker, but on the back are a bunch of historical articles, like, saved. And so, yeah, I can't really list all your things, but I think Valerie was wrong, I think the first big thing you did on the council was to co-draft the GMO Free Marin initiative, so, anyway. And then, there was a few more, there was a bunch more than the smart meter thing, but anyway. So I'm going to put this out there, I hope you guys sign it, and Larry and I met when he first was running for town council, and so I got a side benefit for that. And I'm in awe, really, of how the preparation and the integrity and the care that he puts into his office, so, that's all I have to say. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.[1241.33][1241.33](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Anne Spake. I come from the other side of the mountain where we're underwater today. And I came tonight because I wanted to say a special appreciation for all that Larry has done, not just for Fairfax, but by helping to lead the way on issues that affect us all on both sides of the mountain. The concerns which you have dealt with so well here in Fairfax are exemplary and are still affecting us in other parts of Marin, whether it's issues of sustainable development, whether it's issues of spraying, whether it's issues of energy, issues of protecting our mountain. And those issues will continue, and we appreciate the leadership that you've provided and the intelligent, thoughtful policies which you have helped to lead on, and we look forward to your continuing to do so at the Water District, and the issues that we still have to move forward on together. Thank you.[1317.92][1317.92](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Well, I was hoping you were going to say something, Frank.
Uh-oh. Frank Agar, 13 Meadow Way, Fairfax. I'm just here to wish Larry well, congratulate him on the next phase of his life. And Fairfax has produced some great leaders here in the county, we had former supervisor Pete Aragoni, still a Fairfax resident, and we've got Larry Bragman on the Marin Central Water District Board. And yours truly does serve on a Ross Valley board. So basically, what we've got from Fairfax is we've got folks on both ends of the water supply system. Larry on the top end, and myself on the bottom end of the water supply system. But anyway, we're looking forward to great things from Larry, and I want to thank him very much for all his hard work here in Fairfax, and thank you for supporting him for the work he's done. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.[1384.13][1384.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Frank. Go.
Councilman Michael McIntosh, I'm glad that everybody appreciates that our members up here are representing us. But the one compliment that I think Larry really does deserve, that I have given to him over the years, if everybody remembers 12 years ago, it was cantankerous up here, and he really has brought the decorum to this council and carried us forward in that sense. And I brought this up before, but it is something that I hope as we go forward, and the next person that fills that seat will continue that vein, because it's been beneficial to all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.[1426.13][1426.13](APPLAUSE). Anyone else wishing to speak during open time? Oh, Jennifer Hammond.
Hi, I just really want to wish Larry well from Sustainable Fairfax and myself for all the years of service and just your leadership and articulating the progressive values of Fairfax so well. And thrilled to have Barbara as our new mayor, and Vice Mayor Renee Goddard. So, and thank you, David, for your great leadership this year as well, I really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, John.[1468.23][1468.23](APPLAUSE). So anyone else wishing to speak during open time? I have a, before we go to the consent calendar, there was a special meeting planned for 8:00, can we push that till after the consent calendar, because we have a couple of items we're going to pull?
Yes, as long as we remember to open it later.
We'll do that after we cover the items on the consent calendar. So, a couple things. Renee?
I just, because we often bring it back up here, I just, I'm going to take just a few seconds, and I won't go on and on, but Larry, I really want to personally thank you from the start of all of this, from the start of meeting you and watching how you move through things, how you have taught me patience, really, and that sometimes it could take 30 years, but to look there. Mostly, I want to thank you for being the steward that you are, and for doing that by example, by how you take positions, by how you take brave positions and stances. And I look at the land and the plethora of the earth that is surrounding you tonight, be it in Cellophane, and I will take that with me. And whenever in doubt, I will think of your stewardship and that you carry on being that steward, and I will hope to walk in those footsteps as well. So thank you.
Well, I'd be remiss in not also saying, Larry, that, yeah, you've been a mentor and a friend. I remember back debating whether you should run for this council and being a proponent of that, I'm sure I was not the only one. And I also remember you trying to get me to take, you know, I said, who would want that job, you know? But somebody's got to do it. Basically, it's community service, and I think Larry has shown this community what service really is about. I mean, it's cutting through all the back-and-forth stuff and finding a place that really represents us as a community, and a place that's thoughtful and that Fairfax deserves, because we're a good community and we've just lost a great council member. And I'm jealous of the Water Board for having somebody as wonderful as you, but it's our Water Board too, so that's great. So thank you very much, Larry.[1645.13][1645.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. I want to, I know that a lot of folks are here for the item about Sky Ranch, so we're going to pull that item and we'll discuss it first, but I think there might be, other council members want to pull any items off the consent?
Just let me speak very briefly to number seven, not to pull it, but to note that although my name appears there, it really is Marin 350, and I want to thank very much Jody Timms and Jolan Timms for carrying this and bringing it forward, so, thanks.
Number eight?
That's number eight.
Yes.
So thank you both for that.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, David, and Renee?
Yeah, so for number, sorry, guys, number six, I need to recuse myself, because it's an item about Sustainable Fairfax, so shall I leave now?
Why don't we do this? Well, yes, we're going to pull item six and seven, we will discuss seven first, and we'll take up the consent calendar after, unless there are other members of the public wanting to mention anything about items on the consent calendar. Should we do that?
So, yes, so your options can be, when you pulled item six and seven, then you can take action on the rest of the consent calendar, then you can take action on item six, then Councilor Goddard can come back, and then you can have your discussion on item seven, if that's what the council's pleasure is in terms of how to handle the consent calendar.
Okay, well, that might be a good way to go. Is there anybody wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar? Jody?[1762.13][1762.13](APPLAUSE). Uh-oh.[1764.13][1764.13](APPLAUSE). Okay, so we're going to pull the item on Sky Ranch and discuss it after we go through the rest of the items on the consent calendar. So probably will be just a few minutes to deal with the rest of the consent calendar. Jody?
So I can speak about item eight.
Yes.
Okay.
And you're not wishing to pull it, you just want to speak about it?
Correct, yes, yes. Jody Timms, 290 Cascade. Come on you guys. I brought a few friends today, and I just wanted to thank David and the council for considering our divestment resolution, for the courage to take this issue forward, also for really, to me, the common sense, this just makes so much sense to me, and also just the collaboration with us as a, we're nearly all the, well, about half the steering committee of 350 Marin. And we've got a lot of activities going on in the county, but certainly around divestment, I brought a flyer that I can leave for you. But beyond this particular first initiative with, resolution, excuse me, with the town of Fairfax, we do hope to approach all the towns and cities in Marin to see if they would consider supporting Calpers and MCera divesting from fossil fuels. Every month, a number of us usually show up at the Marin County Employees Retirement Association meetings, which the next one is next Wednesday at 9:00, so if anybody wants to join us to speak, give public comment for divestment, we would appreciate that. We also have a campaign with some of the churches in Marin, and then also, my son, Jolan, who is a Fairfax resident but not here, is working with colleges to move divestment along. I just want to read two of his quotes that he spoke recently in Mill Valley at the Sweetwater, these are the Skype, well, tape. He said, "We need to loosen the grip that coal, oil, and gas companies have on our government and the financial markets, and take away the social license that allows those companies to operate. Divestment says no to climate injustice, and it sets the foundation for saying yes to a democratic and decentralized renewable energy system." So that's what we're asserting, and we would, we really appreciate your support in this resolution. We have, I think a few folks just want to say a couple words, and then we'll be done.
Thank you.
My turn or all? Nobody? Okay.
Well, I just want to thank 350.org for working with our previous mayor David Winesoff, put this together, we appreciate all your efforts in this area, and thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, just to mention, 350.org is the national organization, there's also 350 Bay Area, which puts on lots of activities, and then we're here in 350 Marin. Late in January, you'll probably see on our website announcements about the showing of the film The Future of Energy. We hope to show it here in Fairfax on the 30th, but we've got, again, lots of things going on, and we encourage and appreciate all the support that the town of Fairfax is giving us. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, I want to, so I just wanted to talk really quickly to item 4 on consent. So if you go to the minutes from the November 5 meeting, page 3, at the top of the page, I just want to make sure Garrett, that when this is put into the purchasing policy, that the wording is correct around the non-plant-based materials, it didn't seem very clear. So I wrote something that I can give to you, but basically I'm hoping that it could read, that it be amended to prohibit the town's purchase of single-use plastic water bottles and plant-based materials until such a time that there is a program whereby compostable bioplastics can be processed. And we can tweak that, but I just want to make sure that goes into the policy.
There's a couple of things. The policy has been finalized and included the language that you gave at the last meeting. This is just a reflection of the minutes, and so I don't believe we have all that wording, but we have the most pertinent part. And one thing to emphasize is that that document is kind of a living document, and we may revisit it in the next six months or a year, particularly the Climate Action Committee may want to take a look at it again. So I think we can add language, but I think we got the essence of what you requested based on the language you gave.
Okay.
Just one quick change to the minutes, there is something on page 3 where it says, "Councilmember Kohler referred to Marin Sanitary submitting an updated report." That was actually Councilmember Goddard. And there's, but in essence, I think, anybody else have any comments on any of the consent calendar items other than the two we're pulling?
Could I just make one comment about?
Yes.
Item 8, which is, I read in the paper that the head of Calpers, or some, somebody with some authority in Calpers actually commented on David's resolution, which is, that's progress, because we had a resolution before the council in 2007 asking Calpers to divest from Chevron because of its human rights record in Burma, when it took over another oil operation, Unical's oil operation. And we sent it to them, we sent it to all our elected representatives, and did not get one response. So the fact that you've got their attention with the resolution is progress, and it's something-
We should give it up to Halsted, I think he's pretty, he got it in front of them.
Okay, well, that's progress, so, you know, slow as it may be.
Thank you. Anyone, so, anyone else wanted to speak on a matter on the consent calendar other than item 6 and 7 which we're pulling? Okay, so with that, I'm bringing it back to the council. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 6 and 7?
So moved. Yep, second. John?
Yes, I would move.
Okay.
With 6 and 7.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Councilmember Reed moved, made the motion, second, Councilmember Bragman. Without the consent calendar passes. We're quickly gonna take up item 6 on the Sustainable Fairfax contract, and then we'll move into Sky Ranch for all of you who've been patiently waiting for that. So, members of the council want to discuss item 6?
Now I'll move approval.
We actually might have to open it to public comment as well.
I think we-
No, we pulled item 6.
Okay, well, I'll still move for approval.
Okay, so does anybody in, members of the public want to talk on, about item 6? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. David, would you like to make your motion yet again?
Hey, let's go for number 6.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Councilmember Winesoff made the motion, second, Reed. Motion passes. Now, we will take up item 7, which I've lost in my packet, and perhaps the staff report. Oh, let's get Renee back in here, I'm sorry, I forgot about Renee. You'll have to bear with me, I'm working my way through understanding all the rules, so next one, I won't be making as many mistakes.
Item before you is actually authorizing the town manager to do everything necessary and appropriate to transfer funds from the Fairfax Open Space Committee reserves to the Marin Open Space Trust for the purchase of Sky Ranch. As you're probably aware, the Fairfax Open Space Committee has been working closely with the county Marin, San Soma Open Space Committee, and the Marin Open Space Trust to fundraise for the acquisition of Sky Ranch. In May of this year, 2014, the council allocated $50,000 in Measure A park funds toward the acquisition. Since May 2014, it appears that the Fairfax Open Space Committee has raised approximately $14,000 for the acquisition, and really this action tonight is just authorizing staff to be able to transfer the $50,000, plus whatever funds raised by the Open Space Committee, less their expenses, toward the escrow for the purchase of the funds, and that's what the action is tonight, although I do know there are many members of the community willing to speak on the item.
First, that's, and I think one clarification, I believe that of the money raised, there was one that had an anonymous donor, so we need to verify.
Right, we still need to verify that.
Okay.
Not yet, so we will verify that.
Okay, so first I want to bring it to the council, does anyone want to speak on this item first?
Well, I'll start out a little bit. I know that there's money needed for various different, you know, there's the purchase price, but then there's a lot of work that needs to happen on there, and I'm wondering about, I know we allocated the $50,000 towards the purchase, and I would like to suggest that the open space collection money goes for working on the actual land there.
Quick question, Garrett?
So, maybe I'll just repeat it, what is, there's, we raised a significant number of dollars, 1.2 million, to purchase Sky Ranch. The council allocated $50,000 back in May to go towards that purchase. There's additional fundraising that has occurred by the Open Space Committee, and Councilmember Reed's suggestion is that because there will be restoration work needed, that perhaps we hold that back towards restoration. Does that help? At this point, we're still, the council's still discussing it. Councilmember Winesoff?
Garrett, there was the issue over the last dare to, at least in my inbox, over the horse issue, and I gather there are folks to speak on that this evening. Can you detail for us exactly what the potential vote is this evening? What is it on? Because people will probably want to know what action the council is or is not taking, and how that might affect the issue of horses at the site.
There you go. Okay, wait, is that working? Okay, great. So the action this evening is just authorizing staff to be able to transfer the funds allocated for the acquisition to most, in essence, we've been transferred into escrow with conditions toward the acquisition. So at this point, it's toward the acquisition, that's a commitment of funds, it's just authorizing staff to transfer the funds at the appropriate time.
Garrett, is the $50,000 our Measure A funds, or is it $35,000 Measure A, $15,000 Open Space?
No, it's $50,000 Measure A funds, plus whatever the Open Space Committee has fundraised, which is approximately $14,000, you probably have less expenses, and it was pointed out that we still need to confirm with the anonymous donor that the $10,000 can be allocated toward the purchase.
Okay, okay, thank you. So it seems like it may be the decision of the Open Space Committee.
Yes, indeed, that's why it was the suggestion.
Okay, okay.
Just to clarify for the audience that is here, is that the council already allocated $50,000 from Measure A to the acquisition, and this action tonight is only to authorize the transfer. So, just so that people realize the expectations they may have, may differ, I think, David, thank you for asking for that clarification. So, any other council members want to speak on this matter? I will open it up to members of the public. Thank you. Reminder, you have three minutes, and if you, it would be appropriate or helpful if you would give your name and address, not required, optional.
My name is Kurt Kruger, I'm a resident of Novato, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Marin Horse Council. First, I want to apologize, I didn't bring either a plant for any of you, nor a bribe, so my apologies. The Marin Horse Council appointed a permanent advisory committee to work with the equestrian presence at Sky Ranch. I'm the chair of that committee, and for the past couple months have had discussions and involvement in the effort to keep the horses at Sky Ranch. Over the past month, a number of proposals have been submitted, in what was really the tail end of a long process, and I probably ought to start at the beginning. The Carey family has owned that property for many, many years, there have been horses boarded there on a month-to-month basis for 60 some odd years. As such, the property was never improved as an equestrian facility, it was kept in a way that is appropriate for someone who only has a month assurance that their horse is going to be there. So, the Carey family attempted to sell the land on the market, it was going to go for housing, it was going to leave as a resource to the community, to the people of the county, and to horse owners. Marin County Open Space stepped up to the challenge. The county, in conjunction with most, the Open Space Trust, put together a very complicated deal to acquire the land, very difficult transaction, lots of financing from different corners, $50,000 of which came in the form of a pledge from the city council, so I want to thank the city council and the citizens of Fairfax for helping to make that happen. The land is going to be purchased February 1st, it's going to become part of our public lands. Marin County is very fortunate that we have a population that wants to protect the public lands and make this sort of thing available. The horse community is very interested in retaining a horse presence on Sky Ranch. The complexities of the financing are such that the horses may not stay there through the next few months, they have to be removed before the land changes hands, but we are working with the county to develop a plan that will provide a long-term lease that will do several things. It will recondition the land, restore it, the portions that will no longer be horse facility, restore it to their natural state. The structures and so forth, which are not sound today, will be removed. We have every intention of repairing and keeping the main barn, historic building, in place, and we intend to put the horses in an environmentally sustainable way so that the land is not eroded, it remains a shining star for what an equestrian facility should be like. We hope to have those plans, those arrangements completed within the next couple of months, and then the hard work of doing the actual labor to convert what is there now into the facility I've described will take place during the summer, and once that's completed, the horses will come back. There's much work to be done, there's a lot of arrangements to be worked out with the county. Now, this news initially came as a disappointment to many because there was hope that we could keep the horses on-site through this transition, and it turned out that that was not possible. So, most of the people at Sky Ranch who we're working with have agreed to be part of this, to be supportive, to go forward. Not everyone who's there now feels that way, but I hope you'll hear from others who are currently at Sky Ranch and wish to stay and be part of the process of rebuilding that facility so we can have a permanent horse presence at Sky Ranch.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Hi, I'm Susan Ives, I live in Mill Valley, I'm a member of the Marin Horse Council, I'm a former National Park Service Horse Patrol member, former vice president of the Trust for Public Land, and a contributor to Measure A. So I would really appreciate and thank the council for appropriating money to protect land, specifically to retain equestrian activities in Marin County. I've lived here about 40 years, 40 years, and I've seen a lot of the horse facilities in the county closed down. I know that horses meant a lot to me growing up, I know that they mean a lot to other young people in Marin County now, and it's really unfortunate that the horses that are currently at Sky Ranch potentially have to move. It's very, very expensive to board horses in the county. I don't board in the county, I ride over in East Bay on watershed land. So moving the horses is really a hardship, but I hope that the council will continue to do whatever you can to release the money, to acquire the land, and to do what you can to maintain a horse presence in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, I'm Claudia Molally, I live at 104 Crest Road, which is the last house before the ranch, and I've lived there for about 20 years. And I want to say that when someone goes up to Sky Ranch, the charm of the place or the value of the place isn't immediately apparent, it looks like a dusty old rundown horse ranch a bit, but if you go up there over the years, in different weather, in different environmental conditions, it's a magical place, it's a special place. And it's nice to save it as open space, but it's more valuable as a horse ranch, and I would like the town council to ask the open space, Fairfax Open Space, to help to make sure that the horses return if they have to leave, and that's about it. to make sure that the horses return if they have to leave, and that's about it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lashbrook. I live at 277 Tamalpais Road in Fairfax. I own Marin Tack and Feed, and I have been an equestrian for almost as long as I can speak. And I can tell you that horses really helped me get through life, to say the least. I can say that they definitely kept me on the straight and narrow, and they do a lot for the community. I thank the Fairfax Council and everybody who's had a part of collecting money to obtain this beautiful piece of property and to have it go into open space. I urge all of those involved to keep the equestrian community there going. I can say that the outcome would only benefit all of our town and the surrounding communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sierra?
Sierra Salin. I want to thank the town and open space, and everybody who's donated money to preserve Sky Ranch as open space rather than a bunch of houses. A number of years back, there was a football player, Jamie Williams, wanted to build up there in that bowl. I've been going up there probably about 40 years now, not so much of late, but all through high school, I'd go up there probably three to five times a week, either there or the top of Baldi, day and night. It's a great place to go see stars. It's a great place to see the weather, the fog. I kind of chuckle and laugh a bit about preserving the historic buildings up there, which are kind of a piece of work, and yeah, they're nice, but they were built as temporary structures, probably thrown together probably back in the, whenever that was, and they're still there. It gets muddy, there's runoff, there's problems, there's erosion, and you know, what are we dropping from our cars everywhere we go? And there was one really fine woman who ran the place for a while. I have no idea what her name is anymore. She was kind of a witch, but they'd closed it off from the scenic avenue point and made it more and more difficult to get up there. I don't know what the access is like anymore, but I would really love to see good access from both sides and welcoming rather than, I mean, at one point, it was like private property, you can't be up here, and we all ignored it anyway, but it's a beautiful spot. Thank you for putting up the money, and thank you for folks working on it. There's a lot of work to do up there, maybe, or maybe just leave it be, and it's fine too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Mimi?
Hi, VV Newton, Chair of the Fairfax Open Space Committee. And I had a little back and forth with Garrett and Michael before the meeting, just to understand the finance angle here. We've got the 50,000 for Measure A. We've got a $10,000 donation. We're not sure, you know, what it was intended for. They're going to check on that. There's about the 4,000 or so additional that we raised since we started fundraising in May. And then there was a balance of about 8,500 before that May fundraising began. So, I just throw that out there so you guys understand. There's also the 4,000 annually that you guys budgeted for the Open Space Committee that I want to try and make sure is still in our budget at the end of the year, the fiscal year. So, I just throw those numbers out because I was getting a little confused, and I tried to parse it out just so you could understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Mimi. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Eastman. I live at 133 Portius all my life, and I've been going to the ranch since I was 11 and riding horses up there. And certainly kept me from, I had to buy grain and pay for horse things, so I couldn't buy dope or drugs or anything else. And so, it definitely kept me on the straight and narrow too, and eventually I fell into leasing a part of it and became friends with the Carey family. And so, I leased a part of it until now. I'm still there. And I just, it is a magical place, and my kids grew up going there, being forced to, but they liked it. And they used to say they were going to Magic Land when they were going over to the coyote den area that wasn't a coyote den then. And I mean, there's wildlife up there, and lots of wildlife, and lots of wildlife pictures that we've taken, and we like to, and the horses and the wildlife get along, and we provide water for the wildlife, and also grain for the turkeys. They eat the, our wheat. Anyways, so I would just like Fairfax to not lose another horse facility, and just in the back of your mind, if there's any, you know, way that Fairfax can help keep more horses in Fairfax, it would be nice. And Marin stables, of course, can't grow anymore because they're in a bowl, and they're as big as they're going to get. So, maybe there's other places in Fairfax that could be thought of or something. But I think that it's a shame for the children, the future children, and my grandchildren. You know, they should have horses in their life because they're big, giant, lovable dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Frank Agar. Radita and I contributed $500 towards the purchase of the ranch. I rode out of Sky Ranch back in, back in the day. I think I'll probably throw a Facebook picture on for Throwback Thursday tomorrow. That's probably 30 years old. It's one of the few stable operations in a county that are immediately adjacent to public open space, MMWD land, state park, and GGNRA lands. But you could ride out of Sky Ranch forever. The Sky Ranch stables are one of the last affordable house, affordable horse, horse facilities in Marin. And my concern is, once, once the horses are removed, it's going to be difficult to bring them back. I urge the council, I urge the council to ask Marin Open Space Trust and the Marin Open Space District, and our supervisor here this evening, Kitty Rice, to keep the horses there on-site during the transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jim McDermott. I just want to back Frank's comment. I've had the opportunity to build arenas, put a foundation under a 30 by 90 two-story main barn, everything on two acres with 30 horses present at the same time. And that can be done at Sky Ranch. Because you guys may not ride horses like your grandparents did, we have had zero luck with once horses are removed from a property, the promises made to the people to get them out of there, they don't return. Frank is absolutely right. And as progressive as this council is with the Calpers' resolutions that David drafted, I'd like you to maybe put this in your mind too. We need to start treating horses as native species. And God knows, we do a lot of things for the salmon, thank goodness. We do a lot of things for the native plants and eradicating foreign species. Well, a horse is native to our continent, and I think we are really, sometimes felt like second or third-class citizens. We all are not wealthy people. They're all hard-working. It helps with the nature deficit disorder, people spending times outside. It helps with obesity, because if you ever push a wheelbarrow full of you-know-what, it burns calories. It's healthy, it's historic, and it's Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deborah London. I live at 232 Hillside Drive, and I've lived there for 18 years now. And there's a lot to say, I know. I'm just going to start right where he kind of left off. I know there's a lot of people who are feeling upset about the fact that the deal went through as a vacant land deal, and the horses have to leave. But it's water under the bridge. I don't believe there's any going back at this point, and so I happen to feel that we just need to move forward. And there are a handful of us who are putting a whole lot of faith in what Marin County Open Space has told us, and most, our discussions with them. And there, we have recently formed a Sky Ranch Horse Association, and we, we are intending to plow forward with the hope that they will honor their word and, and make, get these horses back. We have to get these horses back. So, that's one thing I want to say about that, and I think that we're a committed, determined, and persistent enough team that we are going to make this happen. I feel strongly about that. So, on that note, if there's anything you can do to help us to that end, it would be, it would be great. So, you know, okay, so then backwards, just felt like there was a lot of angst there. The place is magical. I've been up there for, on and off, for 30 years, since I, since 1986. And then we bought property and built a house right next to Sky Ranch, and I love it. It can't go away, or at least the horse, it's not going to go away, but the horses need to be there. So, okay, wait, turn, yeah. They have to, we have to preserve the historic presence of them for generations to come. And I, the core people moving forward, working with Marin County Open Space and Most are, you know, I look forward to working with them. I'm trusting their word, and I, you know, I just have to go forward with hope. And let's see what else. And I guess, so one thing that we're going to do when the horses come back, this new, improved, different incarnation, is that we want to offer community, community programs. And we're not completely sure what those are going to be right now, where you have to develop them, but you know, maybe something with the schools. I know that, been on a million field trips with my kids. So, what else? I had a horse there, in case you don't know, for many years. And I guess, lastly, I want to say thank you for allocating those funds to Most for the purchase, and you know, we definitely are going to need a lot more donations to keep this going and to rebuild the place. So, that's, you know, that's in our future for sure. And if there, if there's anything that you can do to help us along the way, we'd really appreciate it. We're not sure where the horses are going yet, but they will be back, if I have anything to say about it. And on behalf of the Sky Ranch Horse Association, we approve this, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Harvey Smith. I'm a former resident of Fairfax and a member of the broader Bay Area horse community. I'm a volunteer with the National Park Service in Tennessee Valley. I keep a horse with a group in the East Bay, on East Bay mudland, so the horses and the people are stewards for about 500 acres of land, open space. And I also am a member of the Alameda County Fair Board of Directors, and of course, we've, we have about, on a slow day, 600 horses and residents there. And I used to run a youth program and work with young people, mostly inner-city kids in Oakland and Richmond. So, I mentioned all these affiliations just to underscore the fact that it's very clear to me the importance of horses in maintaining open space, in, in helping people of all ages to be in contact with horses, as people have said earlier. You know, many times, it's a life, literally a lifesaver. So, I want to urge you to move forward with this allocation, and also, from what people have said previously, I think it's, anything you can do to keep the horses there, to keep down the disruption for, for the people that have the horses and the horses themselves. It seems to me there's got to be a way that you can ease the transition of the property without disrupting what's going on for the horses and the people that take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monte Krueger. I'm the president of the Marin Horse Council. I'd like to first thank the town of Fairfax for allocating the $50,000 from your Measure A fund in support of the acquisition for Sky Ranch. I'd also like to thank the Open Space Committee for their allocation as well. I would also like to ask the town of Fairfax to write a strong letter to the Board of Supervisors in Marin County in favor of retaining a horse presence on Sky Ranch. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Glasscock, and I'm the president of Marin Stables and Trails, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that operates out of Marin Stables. And I just want to thank the Fairfax City Council for bringing this forward, and the Fairfax Open Space for allocating these monies to go towards the purchase of Sky Ranch. I think it's an admirable thing that Fairfax has always supported our equine community here in Marin County. I do want to say that Marin Stables and Trails, as a nonprofit, does support the presence of horses up at Sky Ranch, and we would do everything that we can to encourage you and encourage the county to maintain the equine presence there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Long from Novato. I'm the chair of Marin Open Space Trust, and I want to thank the town council for their allocation of Measure A money, 50,000. We have lined up over 1.2 million dollars now for this acquisition. It was described as complex, and I now know what complex means. We have received about 168 individual donations, many of them from residents of Fairfax. We've received donations from, and pledges from a number of jurisdictions, and in total have more than enough to proceed with the acquisition if everybody comes through with their pledges, and we believe they will. Most, that is, Marin Open Space Trust absolutely supports the retention of an equestrian presence at Sky Ranch. We'd like to see it become a safe and sustainable facility and to be open to the public as soon as possible after its acquisition by the county. Most will have to hold the property for two to three months, and during that time, we will begin, we plan to begin, working on restoration. And we look forward to working with the horse community, and of course, the county, who will be accepting the property from us, buying it from us, to begin implementing the restoration of the facilities that are going to be required for the horses. There's been some doubt about Most's commitment to the horses, but I want to just read you one sentence from our initial offer letter, April 1st, to make it clear that we have all along supported this. We said, "Most hopes to maintain the current equestrian use of the ranch." There you are. And we have continued to advocate for that. Early on, after the contract for purchase was signed, we expected the property to go directly from the owner to the county. And so, we didn't have a, I won't say a horse in the fight or a dog in the fight, but we were on the sidelines. Later on, late summer, we learned that, no, we were going to have to hold on to the property for several months. And at that point, of course, we took a keen interest in whether there would be horses there or not, and said that we needed a decision on this by November 1st so that we could plan for whether we were going to be managing a vacant piece of property or a horse ranch. Well, we extended that deadline to December 1st, and in the last several weeks, there's been a flurry of activity, and I think the horse community and the local folks have really gotten together and come up with a plan that, although it's not complete, looks very feasible and realistic, financially realistic, that will bring the horses back and retain the historical. realistic, that will bring the horses back and retain the historic structures. And we look forward to working with them on that. So, thank you for your support.
Next speaker?
My name is Michelle. I am not an equestrian, but I am a longtime resident of Fairfax. I'm here to represent my family, as well as a variety of friends unable to be here. There are a few holes and things that have been mentioned tonight, one of which Mr. Reed brought up. The money that's being acquired has been directed for restoration. And myself and a lot of people have donated to this project, believing that part of that restoration was maintaining the horses, maintaining their presence. And I think that the whole solicitation of funds was purported to be save Sky Ranch in that regard, not to purchase a piece of property. My money went to keep those horses on the property themselves. So there's a little bit of unclarity there. As a resident, I felt that. And in regards, just to defer to your words, Mr. Bragman, it's true. Once you're here, you want to stay here. A lot of these horses are elderly, and no one has really addressed the intense trauma it creates for a horse of that age to be moved. They've spent their entire lives here. I hope you support that we offer them the same respect that we appreciate by staying in Fairfax.
Just one point of clarification is, the monies that were raised were to acquire Sky Ranch. And so they were for the acquisition. What councilmember Reed was mentioning is that we will begin fundraising for restoration efforts of Sky Ranch, which would include open space restoration, some of the things that have been mentioned, such as stabilization for stormwater runoff and things like that. But the monies that were raised for acquisition, there are some people who potentially were specific in how they donated their money, and I think that's something that Most is looking into. Thank you. So next speaker?
Hi, my name is Dana Monroe. I'm a boarder at the ranch, and I just wanted to speak for the horses here. I think it's been alluded to, but horses are, for those of you that don't know, very socially-oriented. They're herd animals. For us to move them away and get them reoriented elsewhere and then expect to bring them back, like Jim says, is not really terribly realistic. I think we're going to drop off. And I really hope that we can find some way to keep our horses at the ranch during the transition so that they don't have to undergo that kind of trauma and perhaps don't have to make the decision whether to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander?
Alexander Binnick. I realize that this item on the agenda is really about transferring the funds, but I wonder if the council would consider adding a line or two that would express the strong preference and intention of the council, that, first of all, that an equestrian presence would be maintained at Sky Ranch, and also that, if at all possible, that the horses be able to remain there during the transition. I think it couldn't hurt to have that as part of the actual item, if that's possible.
So just to clarify, the council voted back in May to allocate the funds for the acquisition, so at this time to add conditions is not something we could do?
I wasn't thinking about adding conditions, but just the council having it be part of what you approve that expresses its strong preference on the part of the council of Fairfax.
Well, we'll bring it back to the council, and we'll bring that up. Thank you, Alexander.
Next speaker?
Hi, I'm John Rampouda. I have a horse, my wife and I have a horse up at Sky Ranch. We've had it for probably 25 to 27 years up there. When this whole thing came down, I was asked by the boarders, my fellow boarders, to be the spokesperson to represent them at the Sky Ranch Horse Association. I can safely say that I speak for six out of the eight horse owners at the ranch, that at this point in time, Sky Ranch is gone. The Sky Ranch Equestrian Center that has been there since 1950 is lost. The historical buildings in the open pasture with horses roaming freely in a herd will no longer be a part of this piece of Marin. This is not about me and keeping a horse on public land. This is not about Dana or Allison, who have horses there, or Kim, who's been there since she was 12. This is about preserving Marin's historical sites. I find it very upsetting that the two entities, Most and Marin County Open Space District, whose mission statement is to preserve the land for future generations, have taken upon themselves to obliterate this landscape from Marin forever. I also find it deeply disturbing the way Most and Marin County Open Space District have gone about this, using Sky Ranch to gather donations without specifically saying that it was actually for the horse. They could have said, "This is for acquisition of the carry property." I also am very upset, as you can hear me speak, in the way that we've been treated as a group from the start, always leading us on to believe that there was a possibility of keeping the Equestrian Center there, knowing full well from the start that the horses were not on the table. After months and months, and I mean months and months, of jumping through numerous obstacles and hoops set by the county, they would find something else to, that we needed to jump through. On Sunday, Katie Rice, Supervisor Rice, invited people from Most, Jonathan Brown and Bill Long, myself and a couple of other people from the Equestrian Center to her house, so that we can understand where Most was coming from. And I find it odd that Mr. Long said that he was proposal for the horses all along, when he specifically stated on Sunday that the Equestrian Center was never part of the equation. If Most and Marin County Open Space District would have shown us any type of respect and told us this from the start, we would have gone our separate ways and found other places. But this is a facade. I'm sorry to say to break everybody's bubble here, this has been a facade from the start. The Equestrian Center that you see there now is gone, and it's gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Rice?
Yeah, Supervisor Katie Rice, and also Katie Rice, 54-year resident of Marin County. Grew up in Mill Valley, rode a horse all over Mount Tam at a place called the Flying Y Ranch, which was located up at the top of what is now the Third Flight of the Dipsey Stairs. There's a development with a bunch of luxury homes, well, they're not even luxury homes anymore. But anyway, when I was 15 or 16, that property was sold out from underneath the leasing of the stables and was sold to a private developer who developed homes all over that piece of property. And it was lost as a piece of open space and a piece of public land and as an equestrian facility. I've ridden horses all my life in different kinds of conditions. I understand how important they are to the individuals who own them, who appreciate them when they visit them places. I understand what a threatened species stables are in Marin County. So I know that some of the folks up here at the council know that, from the get-go, when we entered into this venture and I called a meeting from members of both the communities of Fairfax and San Anselmo and Open Space staff, when we found out that this property was available for purchase, San Anselmo Open Space Committee, Fairfax Open Space Committee, we approached it as an opportunity to save a beautiful piece of ridgeline, a puzzle in the piece of the Bald Hill Ridgeline, that had been on both Fairfax's radar and San Anselmo's radar as a goal to acquire and attain as public open space and retain. And also, alongside, adjacent to what is the Bald Hill Preserve that are Open Space District lands, we also recognized the horse facility there and the importance of it. And in our conversations, and I think Larry, I would think Larry and John will remember, and I can remember going into the conversations with my board, the opportunity was there to preserve the equestrian facility. If a private developer or property owner was to buy that property, the facility was going to be lost. So in my mind, and I think it was understood by the other folks involved, including the Most people, this was an opportunity to save a critical piece of open space and an opportunity to try to preserve an equestrian facility as well. So I want to say that it was an amazing effort, an amazing fundraising effort, in which the communities of Fairfax, San Anselmo, the Marin Open Space Trust, individuals stepped up and did some fundraising and raised $1.2 million in fairly short order towards the acquisition of this property. It was not done with any nefarious intent to color or persuade folks that something different was going to happen than what did. As the process unfolded, so, one, thank you, Fairfax, for stepping up, and Fairfax Open Space members for all the work you did. Great effort. But, let's see. So, regarding the equestrian facility, and though that's not what you're deciding here tonight, I think it's been really good that the equestrian community stepped up and is here tonight, because the venture that is being contemplated going forward, an equestrian facility on public lands and public open space with a new entity is not a simple venture. It's a complicated venture. And figuring out the path forward is not easy. It's complicated. And we found that out, because by the time the Most, per contract, reached having to have a decision point, because they are in contract to close escrow, they have to make plans for what's to happen in February, we were not at a point where we had the details ironed out, the obligations identified that need to be met in order to say yes to an equestrian facility. Hence, the decision that was made to say, "We don't have everything in place today, December 1st, but we want to continue to work with the horse community." And I think the folks who were involved in this venture know that I am 100% committed. Most has articulated its commitment. I know my Open Space staff is ready and willing to roll up their sleeves and work with you. And I think with the broader horse community behind this venture, we have a better shot of making a go of it. It's going to take the right people, it's going to take some resources, and it's going to take a collaborative effort. So I want to thank you all for stepping up. I understand your concerns. I think you also have to understand that there is a high bar for trying to do something like this on public lands. We need to do it right, and we need to make it so it will be sustainable for generations to come. We want this to be a facility that outlives not only our horses, but ourselves, for the next generation. So again, I want to say thank you. I want to assure you, assure you and this roomful of people of my commitment to supporting, making this equestrian facility work, but it's going to take all of us doing it together and doing it right. And that's all I want to say. And thank you again for the Measure A funds. I think it's a great, great acquisition.
Katie, may I just ask a point of clarification? Thank you for that. I think that's really helpful, to point out the commitment. As far as the transition period where the horses would be moved off, can you just clarify the basic need for that, you know, so that people understand that we realize it's a hardship to move horses off, but that there are some critical reasons why?
Well, first of all, first and foremost and foremost is the fact that the property's in escrow. The escrow closes in February. It is a contract between Marin Open Space Trust and the property seller, or the current property owner that carries. And as part of that contractual arrangement, it was required that either a lease be in place, or the equestrian, or all the personal belongings and animals be off the property when the escrow closes. It is going to take, and if we had it today or on Monday, December 1st, all the details in place about a lease arrangement, about legalities and liabilities for what happens with those horses on the property while it's in Most's hands. And then for the transition to the Open Space District, I think we'd be golden. But Most has not only a contractual arrangement, but they need to make sure that they are protected with regards to liabilities and whatever contractual arrangements they have to be able to be secure in taking on the property. So we will continue to work with them. I think that the folks involved are looking at some options for moving the horses that maybe will not be as traumatic. I think the most important thing is that we have a path forward to do the long-term sustainable thing. And I think that, you know, we didn't have our ducks in a row when we needed to have them in a row, and now we're doing the best we can under circumstances. So I think you just have to, I can't speak for Most.
Thank you. Yes, David?
Katie, it's way over my legal pay grade. But is there no legal workaround so that, as different parties take over the property, these liabilities and things that you mentioned can be addressed to ensure that nobody has liability, but the horses can stay?
Thank you.
Shush.
Yeah, I'm not an attorney. You're an attorney.
Leadership, Katie, you know, we're asking.
Hey, hey.
Hey. You know, anyway. So I, that's, it's Most's contract they're receiving. And I think it's about details and having it all, everything in place, all the securities in place. And I can't answer, I can't answer. You're an attorney, and you're thinking if you roll up your sleeves, you're going to be able to figure out a way to do it.
Well, if not, you know, that's our, that's our stock in trade.
Right. So anyway, we're doing our best.
I appreciate it.
I'm doing, I'm doing my best, and there's folks doing their best to keep this, keep the facility going.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Sorry, Larry, you had a clarification question?
Well, I don't know if Supervisor Rice can address it or not, but maybe Mr.?
Bill Long?
Kruger?
Oh, Kruger.
Whether the facility has liability insurance?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, excuse me. So we're following Robert's Rules of Order. Do not shout out from the audience. We're asking Mr. Kruger a question.
So my question, just as far as the liability issue is concerned, does the facility or do the Sky Ranch horse owners have a liability policy in place?
Yes. Part of the proposal was a million-dollar liability insurance, typical of stables of this kind.
Okay, and that's pretty typical of what's done in Marin County as far as the limits of liability are concerned?
That's, seeing head shaking, yes. I don't know for sure, but.
So, you know, this issue came.
Our attempt was to create or to provide whatever insurance was typical and is necessary. So, yes, the insurance is not an obstacle. That's done.
Okay.
However, Mr. Kruger, that insurance is not in place at this time. That was part of the proposal. Is that correct?
Can I? You're leasing, I'm sorry.
Okay, you can, let's have Supervisor.
And I actually, I think it's a better conversation to have offline, but I would add something else. It's not, it's not just the liability insurance, and I would rather the Most folks spoke to this, but it's also about if we weren't able, there was no, there was no givens in this, that either the folks at Sky Ranch had the desire and also the financial capacity and wherewithal to carry this off. So Most is wanting, and I know the Open Space District is wanting, and I think we can get there, to have the full picture fleshed out. And if they weren't going to have, if we weren't going to have the full picture fleshed out and the horses were going to have to leave, the idea is you give them time to make arrangements before the escrow closes. You don't wait until the last minute.
Right.
So I think that's the best I can do right at this moment.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, I know there's a lot of moving parts to this thing to make it work. Jim, is there any room at Marin Stables for any of these horses? So we've got eight horses up there now?
There's nine.
So we need to, we would need to find?
We're not continuing the discussion. I think there, councilmembers were asking some points of clarification. So, Mark, you wanted to speak?
I did. Hi, Mark Bell, 63 Dominga. Just really briefly, because I'm not following, I haven't followed the debate very closely, I still don't understand why something can't be put together in a two-month period. There must be precedents throughout the United States where there are stables on public land, and some of them, somewhere must be working. And then the second would be what type of budget have they come up with as far as what they want to plan to do with the stables? And I think that would also show how serious they are about keeping the equestrian element in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Council. I remember going to the fundraisers for Sky Ranch, and I clearly understood it was for, yes, the acquisition of the property, but to ensure the survival of the horses at that location. Okay? Period. That's what I thought we were all talking about and promoting. So that's one. Two, as that we have two attorneys on the council, every purchase is a contract. Every contract has a clause. Every contract has an opportunity for a carve-out. There is no reason that the contract for the acquisition of this property cannot have a carve-out that would exclude anything about the horses, as well as it can include anything about the horses. Within the last two months, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal about, "Buy my property that includes taking care of my dog, my cat, my horse for perpetuity so that they can live on its piece of land." It's a very common contractual agreement. As for the insurance, if they have insurance in place, it can be an addendum to any contract that just says, "Name me as an additional name insured." That will indemnify Most, Malt, Fairfax, anybody else. And if that's within the liabilities, that's assumed to be reasonable for a horse, I really think there's obfuscation that we're not going forward with a very clean contract to include the horses. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So, if you've already spoken, anybody else want to speak who hasn't already spoken on this matter? Okay, with that, I want to bring it back to the council, but I want to be clear that what we're talking about is the transfer of funds to Most. The council already voted for, to transfer or to approve $50,000 for the acquisition. Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Larry?
Yeah. I mean, I just think we need a little context because we really saved Sky Ranch from being subdivided into residential property when we managed to get it. It was actually in escrow to be sold. When it, an opportunity came, that escrow fell apart. And thanks to Most, Jonathan Braun, who sort of delicately negotiated between the county, Marin Open Space Trust, San Anselmo, and Fairfax, really managed to shepherd this thing to fruition. So, we came very close to losing this property to development. So I think we, you kind of have to start with that context as far as this, this is a good thing that we're doing. That being said, our council has definitely weighed in previously when the Marin Stables were slated for removal by the Marin Municipal Water District to be, to convert that property into a utility yard. Our council did make a statement, did send a strong letter to the district to renew the lease of Marin Stables. And I certainly think we can, if the, if there is a consensus of the council to continue the horse operation, we can do that. I don't think at this point it's fair to add a condition to our donation of Measure A funds. This is something we committed to. This is something that Most is relying on to make this go forward. And I certainly don't want that property to go back on the market and get snatched up by a wealthy party. It was actually rezoned at one point for, I'm not sure how many different parcels, but it was rezoned very favorably for development on a temporary basis. So, I would like to see the council move forward with directing staff to move the money, to make arrangements to get this, to make our contribution to the escrow. But I think the council should, should weigh in, and I think it's always been our council's preference to maintain the historic use of the site. And, you know, it's just been sort of the general, I think, culture of the town of Fairfax to try to maintain historic uses where we can. I'd like to see Marin Stables work with Sky Ranch to see if it could board some of the horses temporarily or if something like that could be worked out, and to see if we could reduce the stress to the horses so that it's not gone forever. So, that's what I'd like to see, and I think everybody, hopefully, everybody in the room wants to see the same thing because I think it fired the imagination of everybody to save Sky Ranch. The image of the horses, all that, was part of what brought us together as a community. So, I think we need to rededicate ourselves to making that vision happen. It can happen, but we've got to work together, and we're going to have to reestablish trust. We're going to have to really sacrifice to make it happen, and maybe the Marin Municipal Water District will be able to help at some point in the future.
Thank you. Oh, John?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think going forward, what we're really talking about is enabling this to happen. And I think that really there is no question of the interests. I can't speak for everybody in the council, but I probably can when I say that people are very interested in keeping this, an equestrian facility up there. I mean, I'm really intrigued by the mention of, you know, potential community programs and really bringing the horses and the community closer together, and I think that'd be a wonderful asset to our community. And I'm really hopeful. I mean, basically, we're at the place where we are. Legal issues, I mean, I'm less of an attorney than attorneys that are specialized in other But basically, there's a lot of details to work out, and I think a lot of efforts were made to try to work it out by December 1st. That date came, and it wasn't quite together enough for Most to be comfortable. And, you know, maybe there's a way to pull something out of it, but it could be that our efforts are best used right now to try to work out a sustainable program for, forever, basically, instead of looking at the next two months or four months or whatever that period of time is and, you know, try to bridge that gap as best we can, but really develop something that's going to work in a long-term way. Because, I mean, speaking to people who've lived month to month there, you know, it's basically baling wire and, you know, it's patched together, and it's, it's just barely keeping it together, and it's month to month, and it's insecure that way. And really, what we're trying to develop here, and what I would really like to see, is something that is secure and sustainable and keeps equestrian facilities here. And so I would support us okaying this money for the, you know, close of escrow so that the land starts to move that way. And I would really endear everybody to, encourage everybody on all sides of this. I mean, I'm hearing some people are kind of pissed that it's not working out perfect. I think we all have to work together to get to a good place. And I would encourage everybody to work together towards that end. And I think that good place is long-term, having horses there and having this be public land accessible to everybody. So, thank you.
Oh, I mean, just my position is to absolutely support the appropriation of the funds. And someone in the audience had said that they would request of us a letter to the supervisors to encourage and to state a position as the town. I think it's an awesome opportunity for this town to integrate a little bit more with what it is that's going on out there, which I really had no idea about, to be quite frank with you all. And as Larry just mentioned to me, we did pass Measure J, which has, one of the, one of the goals of Measure J was to increase our youth programming. So, to bring horses into the community and to reintroduce what is a historical piece of Fairfax to the present and future of Fairfax would be really important, and I could see that as a great benefit to everyone. So, yeah, I'm all for it and with a letter of support from the town.
So, I would like to thank everyone who came here and expressed their opinion. I also want to extend our thanks to Jonathan Braun, Mimi Newton, the Open Space Committees of San Anselmo and Fairfax, Supervisor Rice for her leadership, members of this council who participated, Most. I want to remind folks that we raised 1.2 million dollars in three months. That's unheard of. And I also want to remind folks that during some of the really difficult times during the council meetings on housing issues, when I announced that we raised the money for Sky Ranch, almost everybody raised their hands in support. It was universally supported by the town. I have two suggestions. One is that we take off on something Councilmember Reed said earlier. I'd like us to move forward to transfer the $50,000, if I get a motion, to provide the town manager with the authority to transfer the $50,000. But as far as the remaining funds, because we need to work out issues with anonymous donor and also with Open Space to determine how much of the money that they raised should be towards that kind of revolving fund for their $4,000, and we will need to begin fundraising for restoration, I suggest that we hold back on those additional monies at this time and work out those issues with Open Space. But I do say, I want to say another thing is, from what I understand, that a number of folks, Mr. Kruger and others have come forward, the Sky Ranch Association, I believe is what it's called now, is, I think the proposal that was submitted, from what I understand, has gone a really long way towards moving in the right direction. So, I feel confident that there's a lot of support for maintaining a horse presence. And I'm concerned that people don't feel that because I really get a sense of that from, from all parties involved in the transaction. So I would say, I think we could potentially, as a council, authorize the mayor to sign a letter in support of maintaining a horse presence, given, and I would ask the town attorney if we had the authority to do something like that on this item, given that it was really for transfer of funds. But conditioned upon that we get a plan in place that really provides the funding, the insurance, the long-term sustainability, and provides the kind of horse ranch that would be appropriate on public land, as I think we've seen with Horse Hill. So, it's not a blanket, but we really want to move forward. And so I think, Janet, would it be appropriate for the, for us to also authorize that a letter in support of maintaining a horse presence be sent to the supervisors with my signature?
If you look at the recommendation, it is to authorize the town manager to do everything necessary and appropriate to transfer funds from the Fairfax Open Space Committee to the Marin Open Space Trust for the purchase of Sky Ranch. So, you would need to find that, you know, that's a necessary and appropriate action in connection with the transfer.
And so it would not be, so I just want to ask a clarifying question. There's no condition on the funding. There would be no condition on the transfer of the $50,000 or as the council motions. It would just be that we want to send along a letter of support for maintaining a horse presence, provided that we get sort of a sustainable plan for the future that meets the needs of Open Space and Most.
Yeah, if you find that a necessary action in connection with the transfer of funds, that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, John?
I think it would be possible to say that, given the variety of opinions about the security of the horse thing, we would, you know, we could move, to move this, to direct staff to move this funding, but also to write a letter to the Board of Supervisors expressing our belief that it would help the actions of the community to come around the idea of creating a sustainable plan for the horses there. If we supported that.
Just to clarify any questions, so, so, supporting, so a letter of support to the Board of Supervisors saying that we support moving forward with a horse presence, given that they get a sustainable plan for the future, that?
It will help the horse community come together around this.
Okay. Yes. All right. Thank you.
That would be defining. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we can, I can work with the town manager on such a letter if you would like to authorize me to do so. So, bringing it back, I know that was a complicated thing, but I will be better next time. I would like to entertain a motion.
Could I just add one thing? I think the letter should just state, "It's our preference that there be continuity of the horse operation up there." And I think the letter should also include our willingness to cooperate in order to effectuate that proposal.
Yeah, that's a good word.
I agree. So, would someone like to make motion?
I would move approval with.
Madam Mayor, can I, one clarification? In terms of the funding, are we saying, "I know it's the $50,000, but do I also have authority to transfer some amount that the Fairfax Open Space believes is appropriate for the fundraising effort?" Is that what the clarification was?
I would suggest, because we will need, it's my understanding that Most definitely needs the $50,000 to move forward with the final acquisition, but that there will be additional fundraising needed for restoration of the property, things like stormwater stabilization. So, my suggestion, if the council agrees, is we authorize the transfer of the $50,000 and consider taking up the additional monies after we resolve those issues to transfer those as well. Does that work, or would you like to transfer all at once?
Actually, I just, what would be easier, so I don't have to put something back on the agenda?
Okay.
Would just be authority to transfer some amount from the Open Space Committee that's approved by the Open Space Committee.
Okay, I think that works. So, who would like to make the motion? Larry?
I'd move approval of the item with the amendments that John and I have added.
Second?
Does, I'm willing to second that, but to clarify, Larry, are you okaying Garrett's idea of working that out with the Open Space also?
Yeah, I think, yes, yeah. So, we're delegating.
Okay. I would second it with that understanding.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[music]
So... All right, so, we, we're going to go ahead and get started, and I misspoke earlier. We are going to wait for the special meeting item till later. I know we've got folks sitting here regarding Inyo Avenue. But next, let's keep them brief, let's do our quick council member reports, and I think...
You can't possibly, maybe if you moved the town manager and council reports to the end of the meeting, and then we could start the regular agenda?
Okay, well, thank you, Town Manager, for that suggestion. So let's go to item nine on the regular agenda, and...
The council please allow us to know when the possible items are going to be noted?
Yeah, we're going to do that after we get through the regular agenda, but before, well, okay, we've got an option here. I know there are, I, let me ask, are there folks here to discuss this report on status of the housing element? Okay, are there folks here regarding item 11? Let's do this, let's do item nine, because we have people here for that, then we will do the special meeting. Does that work for you, Alexander? And then we move, will move into the rest of the regular agenda. Town Manager, is that workable?
That works, as long as it's okay with the council.
How does the council feel about that?
I got to tell you, why don't we, when we're done with the smart meter thing, why don't we recalibrate and see about nine and 10, which, at nine, 10, and 14? It seems to me that 12 and 13 are the things we have to get to. Everything else is less so.
I think that's a good point, we'll recalibrate after, thank you. So let's move into item nine, and I'd like to have the staff report, please.
Sure. Okay, item nine is the discussion consideration of a resident's petition regarding parking issues in the Inyo Avenue neighborhood and discussion of possible solutions. Staff is actually recommending two options, but what we thought is, provide you a little background, and then we'll talk about those options in detail. So, the council, you may recall, at your November meeting, you discussed petitions submitted by the residents regarding Inyo Avenue parking issues. Petitions specifically discussed the difficulty residents had of parking there on their street, and they had a suggestion of implementing a residential parking system that would prevent overnight parking by non-residents. At the council meeting, it appeared that some of the speakers were implying that really part of the problem was related to the patrons of downtown and their behavior after they've been at downtown and then returning to their vehicle. Subsequent to that time, we have received a letter that is actually attached to the staff report that indicates really the issue is limited parking. With regard to that, it, from staff's perspective, while it may seem to be a simple solution, just implement a residential parking system, these type of things always have unintended consequences. Your downtown and adjacent neighborhoods, it's really one comprehensive type of area, and really it needs to be a more comprehensive approach. If you're going to look at implementing a residential parking system, then you really need to have a discussion with the downtown, the businesses, to kind of determine where people are going to park, visitors, how is it going to be managed, how is it going to be enforced? Because if you don't have an enforcement system, then it almost doesn't really matter having a permit system. So those are just kind of issues to consider. And so, keeping that in mind, what staff did is, we're only proposing an interim, two interim solutions, although the council can choose to do something different. And the reason for that, again, is we believe that within the town center element, we are planning, one of the key components is to talk about a managed parking plan. And that would include the downtown, that would include the residential neighborhoods, and that would include the issues like pricing for parking, enforcement, the permit system, how that will all work. What we envision is that that discussion would probably occur sometime next year, when we start the discussion on town center element. So with that in mind, what we did is we proposed two options. First option, really addressed the town would allow residents to park overnight in the parcade and Mono Avenue parking lots on Sunday night, and then we would monitor the situation in the neighborhoods and see if that had any effect. Now, granted, that solution probably only addresses parking issues caused by street sweeping on Monday mornings, and what the solution would be is residents would just have to, if they parked in the, any of the parking lots, they would just have a note on their dashboard saying they're parking there due to street sweeping. They wouldn't be sighted, and on Monday mornings, they wouldn't have to move their car, they could leave it there for Monday because they have this note. Now, it should be noted that that actually takes no council action, because right now the town actually allows that system. Probably about, on the average, 700 requests a year is what PD receives from people asking to park overnight in the parcade, or even different locations in town, just depending on their circumstances. As long as they have a note, or if they call PD ahead of time, we don't, we don't enforce it. The other thing is, we currently actually sell permits to allow people to park overnight in the parking lots, that's $60 a year, and we do obviously cite people who park overnight. And so, this solution actually doesn't impact any of the revenues generated by parking citations or parking permits. We generate about 11,000 citations a year for parking violations and about 2,000 from the parking permits. The second option is something that's a little different, which would be...
Excuse me, was that $11,000 from citations?
Yes.
I think you said 11,000 citations.
Oh, sorry, $11,000 from parking citations related to overnight parking in the downtown. And so the second solution has to do with adopting a resolution that'll allow overnight parking in the parcade and Mono Avenue parking lots, and then monitoring the neighborhood to see what kind of effect that has. Now, this solution may address the parking issues caused by non-residents parking overnight in the neighborhoods. Again, what this would require is residents who park overnight in the parcade. What they would do is they'd be able to do that, and on Mondays, again, with a note, we would probably allow exceptions so they could leave their car there because of the street sweeping, so we wouldn't enforce the four-hour requirement. Pretty much it impacts parking revenues, permit revenues, but hopefully that would address the overnight parking, or at least would give us an opportunity to monitor to see how well that works. Now, one of the things we had in the staff report, it's not clear, we don't know if RV parking or boat parking impacts the neighborhood. You could adopt something that prevents that in the street, but if that's not an issue, which staff doesn't believe it is, then we wouldn't address that. And so, one of the other things I wanted to report on at the November meeting, you did ask the town attorney to look at the possibility of allowing us to tow vehicles sooner than 72 hours. Turns out, that's not possible, it's preempted by state law. And how it works now in residential areas, if PD gets a call, they go out there, mark the vehicle, then 72 hours later, they could tow the vehicle. And then, as clarification, when it comes to a residential parking system, is it's a neighborhood area, so it wouldn't be block by block, it'd be areas that residents with that permit could park in that area. And so that's how it would work. And, but if they were to park in another area, then obviously their permit wouldn't be valid. So, again, we're seeing that that would be better incorporated as a comprehensive approach to manage parking for the downtowns, to address those neighborhoods. Again, this is a fluid situation, we're thinking of try one of these options, let's see how well it works, and then we could come back and take a look at it in four to six months. But that's the staff recommendation. I think council can choose to direct us to do different things, modify what we're recommending, and pretty much that concludes the staff report.
David?
Any chance you had a chance, opportunity to discuss this with Mr. Ardito before the meeting?
No, I did not.
Oh, that's too bad. I'm, I'm sure he'll share his thoughts with us in a moment. Part of the thing that he brought to our attention is, yes, there's a parking issue on the, on one part, but also extraordinary rudeness, is a nice way of putting it, on the part of some of the patrons of, of our downtown business establishments late on in the evening who do things that are inappropriate and wake the neighbors up, et cetera. And in these two things, there's, I, I just don't see where we're attending to that issue. I'm wondering if you have thoughts on that?
Sure, the reason we, we did not is because in the subsequent letter, it seemed to be more of a parking issue than a behavior issue. But, that being said, I did talk to the police department, and there are some things that PD can do to increase their presence to try to address those issues of unruly patrons. We can go ahead and do that under any scenario, and I'll just direct the chief to go ahead and do that this time. Prefer not to say what they are, just because then people would know what we're doing.
Others on the council, Larry?
Question to Janet, as far as enforcing parking restriction less than 72 hours, can we not tow, but cite vehicles?
Yeah, we looked at that, and we don't think that you really can. We think that it's, the way it's written in the vehicle code, it says, may tow for 72 hours, and, and so we believe that it, it fully covers it, and to reduce it would not be permitted, would be preempted in that regard, and to cite as opposed to tow. I know that in practice, there are citations issued at 72 hours and as opposed to a direct tow at 72 hours. So I think that's possible. But if you wanted to cite for like 24 hours or something, I, we don't think that, we have the authority to do that.
I mean, we, we enforce shorter parking restrictions in the downtown area.
Yes, we had, we had a very vigorous discussion about this, because I believe the same thing. And there are very specific reasons why you can have shorter time periods, and we don't find that there's one that would really fit here very well. I'm happy to send you some of the research on that, if you'd like to look at it.
There's actual case law on it?
No, there's, there's, by analogy, but, no, I, we didn't, we found some case law as far as the, the motorhome recreational vehicle issue is concerned.
Right.
But on this issue, no. No, this is an interpretation.
Hmm, okey-dokey.
Yes, I know, I, I, believe me, it was a vigorous discussion, because I, I have very much the same ideas about it that you do.
Okay.
But it was multiple attorneys, and we all weighed in, and we all looked at it, and, and this was the consensus. Now, because we don't have case law, it's not, you know, it's nothing that's definitive. It is opinion, it is interpretation, so...
Okay.
But they...
Okay, I mean, if you do have anything that you could share with us...
Yes, I will.
That would certainly help guide us as we go through this, so thanks.
Okay.
I have two questions. So the first, you mentioned that we could actually cite at 72 hours, rather than just putting a sticker on saying, needs to be moved in 72 hours. Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, this, the vehicle code allows you to tow at 72 hours, so, you know, it doesn't appear to be any additional, like you wouldn't have to cite first, that you could. After you mark the car, it's still there at 72 hours, you could tow it. And you'd have to have the proper noticing for signage, but...
No, I'm, I'm going back to just issuing a citation for a car being, not, so, they issue a citation with a financial penalty for being there 72 hours.
Right.
Can that happen?
Yes.
And then, if somebody, so it can be towed if it's not moved as well. But, one of the things I'm thinking, I, I'm actually in that area quite a bit, and there are, there are cars that I know of that what happens is they get marked and they just move it. But it's still a car that's a presence on those blocks.
Yes.
And, so I'm wondering of the possibility, and I come from an enforcement background, so this may not be the most palatable for other folks, but maybe the idea of a site at 72 hours with a financial penalty, and then also if they haven't moved it, because that might also deter people from this continual moving just a few feet.
Right.
Which still is blocking area. The other question I have is, I know you talked about an option, a subset, is to make it illegal for RVs, boats, and trailers. There also are cars that I've seen in that area, and probably other areas, that appear to be disabled, flat tires, a lot of junk in the back of the pickups. If we were to look at that kind of option, are, are those kinds of things possible to add in? Or am I off-base?
Yeah, no, you'd mark it and, and then you could tow it, or...
No, if we adopted an ordinance saying, no RVs, boats, trailers, could we include in that ordinance, no cars with, that are disabled, such as flat tires, no cars with excessive junk in the, in the pickup? Those kinds of things?
I, I understand what, what you're trying to do, but what you would need to do for a disabled vehicle is you have a, a proof that it's disabled. So you have the owner, you ask them to start it, to move it, and if it's unable to move, then it's disabled. You have to have that kind of proof.
Okay.
So if something looks just like it probably doesn't run, you really do have to have them prove that it doesn't run.
Okay, but we could still go back to the potential of the 72-hour citation. Okay, so, other comments?
Yeah, can I just, see, to me, we're trying to find a technical fix to a problem that I thought Mr. Ardito identified with great clarity, which is, I want to get back to the fact that he lives in a neighborhood for decades, and it has changed, and people have begun to treat his neighborhood with disrespect. And to sort of manipulate our way toward an ethical reevaluation of behavior, I think, is, is hard. We have to, in my opinion, find a way not to tweak codes and find if your car is this and move it 20 feet or that, but rather figure out a way to say to people who come to our community, or who live in our community, hey, treat that neighborhood as you would treat your own, or, more importantly, as you would treat your mother's neighborhood, and, and don't crap on it. And that, I think, is the goal of finding resolution here. I think all of this is going to fail. Well-intentioned, but it's not going to be as effective as I think making people understand that there has to be a systemic change in the way that they treat and respect other people.
A question, how, how do, what's your suggestion as to how to address that?
You know, one of the things I've thought of, and Garrett and I had this with another neighborhood issue with regard to UPS trucks and FedEx trucks just willy-nilly, parking on somebody's sidewalk and cracking it open and putting other people at risk. The idea of, of, of signs on the ones, on the, at the location, which says, you know, be respectful, I'm sure we could word it out. The other is that we go to the bars themselves, I think this is mostly where it's coming from, and, and, you know, would it, would it be impossible for bartenders for the bars to put up a sign behind the cash register? Kind of big, right next to the Go Niners and Giants, which says, hey, when you leave here tonight, be respectful of the neighborhood where people parked, they're sleeping. Or any combination of any other good ideas that clever people like us in the community can come up with.
Thank you, David, that's helpful. So with that, I will open it up to public comment.
Good luck. You know, as far as cars that like, don't look right in the neighborhood, it's like, there's something about that that really bothers me. It's like, you know, you're painting your house the wrong color, it's like you're wearing the wrong color bow tie on a Tuesday or whatever, it's like, there's just something, matter of taste and censorship in that, that I really don't like. And it sounds like you're not going to do it anyway. But in terms of a neighborhood, I think the only way that you can do it that's going to work is, and I really don't like bureaucracy and paying fees for permits or whatever, even if it is like, you know, 20 cents a day, or whatever it is for $60 a year for a parking permit. But I think the only way you can really keep people out of a neighborhood is have signs that's like, only, I mean, like San Francisco, it's like, only Area E is able to park here kind of thing, which would also cut down people having six cars in that neighborhood, because they'd have to buy a permit for each one of their cars. But if that neighborhood had a sticker that, or maybe you get like two stickers for a household that you can park in this neighborhood, but only people that have that sticker can park there, other than that, how are you going to keep people out? It's like, all kinds of signage, respect, you know, ethics, morals, it's like, some of us are just jerks, no matter what we do, and some of us are going to like, you know, smell the daisies walking down the street and like, you know, whatever, but it's hard to, it's hard to codify or put that into laws, or, I mean...
You're right.
Yeah.
But what, but what we were talking about, what Garrett was talking about at the very beginning, is, they want relief now. We're going to do a managed parking analysis, but as you know, from government, we'll get around to that, I'll be grayer, and you'll be grayer. But in the interim, Mr. Ardito and his community...
Sticker and a sign.
Thank you, Sarah. Next speaker?
Well, you're right. We do have many issues on Inyo and the council and Madam Mayor, you've identified them as well. I agree with the last speaker that requested compliance isn't necessarily going to work. The theater put a sign on one of our poles that requested their patrons not park in our neighborhood, yet at movie time, we can watch Parker after Parker after Parker walk up the street, around the corner, up to the theater. What we're trying to do on Inyo, and it will work for Mono and Napa and Dominga and Main Court and probably Pastore and Bell and all the neighboring streets that are having parking issues with business overflow, is we're asking for managed parking. We're asking that our streets not become a parking lot for disabled or underutilized vehicles. It's a storage ground is what it is. I mean, when I walked up here tonight to this meeting, I passed a car that has been parked on Inyo for over a week now, not disabled, but looked disabled. It had a tarp over it. Unfortunately for the, the owner of that vehicle, the wind apparently blew the tarp off and his vehicle is full of rain. It has been stickered by the city. It's still there. He may or may not get a ticket tomorrow. You know, enforcement isn't always at 72 hours. We had a vehicle last week that was ticketed and it remained parked on the street for a couple of days past the ticket. So the ticket was almost like a permit to park there for an additional 48 hours. The vehicle wasn't towed. If we towed it 72 hours, that might get the idea across that you can't leave your vehicles indefinitely. But what we're hoping for, we're not trying to cripple the downtown, we're trying for an even-handed approach. What we want to do is we want to guarantee or at least give the residents an opportunity to park on their street. We have a need to be on that specific street. We live there. We have a need for the elderly to walk to their homes without having to walk a good distance. There are some elderly on that street. There's some physically challenged people on that street as well. We have visitors and family that can't come and visit because there's no parking. Service providers cannot come. My mom recently had a stroke. The nurse couldn't even park near the house to come in and treat her. She had to park on the other side of the block. You know, maintenance people. I watched my neighbor across my street, he's got a project going on his house, and I watched the construction folks having to haul the materials a distance up and down the street because they couldn't park in front of the house that they were working on. Emergency services, you know, granted a fire truck can park in the middle of the street and nobody's going to stop that from happening, but, or an ambulance, but should we have to have that situation where they have to block the road to do it? It's, it's in a situation that, that it's, it's kind of unbearable because it's ongoing, it just doesn't stop. And what we're asking is, if we could manage, I know the town of San Onofre has an ordinance in place where between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM, it is not legal to park on the streets of San Onofre. So they don't have a parking problem. People have to move their vehicles. They can't leave them for 24 hours or 72 hours or whatever. But we're asking not for that because that would cause a hardship for some of the residents, but what we're asking for is that the residents have at least an advantage maybe, a priority to park on their own street rather than give it to the outside visitors that are coming in. We've got, on the weekends, the bicyclists come in and that has always kind of perplexed me, you know, they're cyclists. Why don't they ride to their destination instead of driving to their destination and then riding? But they park in our neighborhood and they'll go up Mount Tam and they'll be there all day long. And when they leave at the end of their day, they're quickly replaced by someone for the theater or for 19 Broadway or for some business uptown. I can't, I can't specifically say that those are the ones that are impacting us, but I think they do have a, a pretty good impact on us. So what happens is it's, it's almost like they're waiting. It's like San Francisco, you're waiting for a parking spot to open up and if the resident isn't the, the next vehicle there, guess what? You've got to park somewhere far away. And that's not quality of life. I mean, as, as Councilman Weinsoff said, I've lived in the town for decades, for close to 60 years now, and, and I've seen the change. It's not like we moved in and it was like this. We didn't have this problem. It's developed. So we need to develop a solution to manage the parking, just like we do for the parking uptown. We manage it for the businesses. We look at it and we say, "You know what? We believe you have a need to be here for two hours to conduct your business and that should be adequate time and then you can move on." What reason do non-resident vehicles need to be in our neighborhood for 72 hours? 48 hours? 24 hours? Eight hours? Why do they need to be there? We're not trying to stop them from parking, but what we're trying to do is turn over those parking spaces. As long as they're in it, no one else can have it. And the residents on Inyo move our vehicles daily. We drive them to work, that space is available. We come home and we cross our fingers that there might be one there when we get back. Oftentimes, there's not. And we would like kind of a way to guarantee a better chance of that happening for us. That's quality of life.
Thank you. Other speakers on this matter? Mallory?
Mallory Geithheim. Perhaps a solution might be to, I totally, I can understand this and even though I grew up in New York and would have to walk hours to get to my apartment, but could we have a two-hour or four-hour per, uh, sign that says, "Parking only" for this short amount of time and then issue permits for the people who are residents so they could park as long as they want? That just seems like a easy fix for that. And just decide whether it's fair to have a two-hour and you have to move your car. In terms of people going to the bar, no, I don't think, David, any sign is going to get anybody who's already been at the bar to be quiet. But, you know, I wish you well with that and I hope it would work. But, and I also don't think that the bartenders are going to say this to people, you know, whether there's a sign or not, I, it, it's not going to make much difference. So I would, I would suggest we just do either a two-hour or four-hour. I don't know how that would work. What?
What?
No, realistically. And then just have permits. In terms of what you were talking about, Barbara, I, I really agree. I have a neighbor who has a U-Haul and he works on his cars and when he's not working on it, they're just, they're just living there, you know, not moving. And then he has a pickup truck and occasionally, you know, he parks in somebody else's little, you know, one space that they have across the street from them. So I, I would definitely back that up. If that happens, it should be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other speakers on this? Alexander?
Yeah, I actually was just about to make the same suggestion that Mallory just did. Sometimes I have occasion to go over to see a medical person in Berkeley and there are some neighborhoods in Berkeley that have that kind of system. It's, uh, permit parking, everyone can park for up to two hours and otherwise it's permit parking. The only questions I have about implementing that in Fairfax, I'm not sure if other neighborhoods would want that as well, if that would be fine or not, but for the residents, if they want to have guests come and visit them, would those guests be then limited to the same two hours? So it might bite them in a way, you know, a fix that creates another problem. And also, would a two-hour limit be imposed in the evenings as well? And until what time? And I think there are some pieces of this that really need to be thought through. Thank you.
Thank you. So other members of the public? Mr. Ardito, we did hear from you already, but if you can keep it really quick?
Um, in addressing-
If you can come to the mics because we are being recorded. Thank you. And push the button?
Thank you. In addressing the visitor issue, that can easily be done. I've got a cousin that lives down in Santa Cruz and they have parking issues as well and they're issued visitor permits for the residents. So when someone comes to visit their home, they have a paddle. It's a, it's a removable permit. It could be a placard, it could be a paddle that they put on the dash of the vehicle that says, "I am a guest of..." whatever address it is, and they're allowed to park as a, if a permitted vehicle. So that would stop any concern as far as that goes. And, you know, I've, I've got solutions, as you see on the letter that we have, there's a number of things we can do. We're trying to be even-handed about it. We're not trying to slam dunk anybody. We're not trying to exclude anybody. We're not trying to negatively impact anybody. We're just trying to make it a positive effect for the neighbors with the businesses in mind.
Thank you. Michael? Michael? Sorry.
I think the suggestions are good about eventually going to your managed parking and having the permits and having like a two-hour allotment. But what if, what if the city also capitalized this and thought about the old conversations about yes or no to parking meters? The city could also offer and put, instead of the signs, you know, which is nice, be respectful to our neighborhood, but include on the sign by saying, "Parking permits for our cities are available, available at." And that way you could designate a two-hour permit or a four-hour permit without having parking meters that anybody could park in a different neighborhoods, but that way you're also going to get some revenue and they're going to be very conscious of if they park their car, they're really going to leave it. And those are the same people that aren't going to dump it overnight. So the city might pick up a lot of revenue and still be able to accommodate the neighbors.
Thank you, Michael. Bruce?
Bruce Ackerman, 17 Valley. So I, I don't live in the Inyo neighborhood, I live in a different neighborhood. So I just would agree with staff that it, it, and with the comments I'm hearing tonight, it does sound like we are beginning to stick our toe into the question of a managed parking plan. For Fairfax, that, that will probably be discussed. I agree with Councilmember Weinsoff that it will probably be discussed after we've all aged a bit longer. But as a resident of another neighborhood, I would say that if that were to be implemented in the Inyo neighborhood right now, but not anywhere else, that our neighborhood would probably be, not benefited much from that. We would probably end up with overflow parking into our neighborhood by, from people who couldn't park in the Inyo neighborhood anymore. So it probably has to be done as an overall strategy. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Other speakers on this? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I'm actually looking forward to having this conversation about an integrated managed parking plan before I'm any more gray. Because as we see, this is, this is a growing problem and it affects everything that we look at in terms of how this cha, town is going to grow and change or not grow and not change. And we have the creativity, just in Mr. Ardito's letter, I want to thank you for that. You gave some excellent suggestions and every one of them, I thought, oh yeah, yeah, that, so we've got all of this out there and we certainly have the resources, the creativity to do this. So I'm, I am anxious to get moving on looking at this and looking at the town center and how we're going to circulate and how we're going to park. I wanted to speak real quickly to what, what David brought up and that is that, don't underestimate the power of a grassroots creative sign campaign. Now, I don't think it's going to work in the bar, but kids in a neighborhood can put up signs that say, "Respect our neighborhood" or, "Hey bikers, why don't you get out of your car and bike?" Things like that, they actually work. So it's not something that I could say that we could professionally offer to have manufactured at the town level, but absolutely, I think grassroots campaigns are, are a great way to start and I think you will see some results, if not a conversation certainly. I had one other thing I wanted to say and that is that I want to just point out for anyone who's listening at home, that I did not know that you indeed can call our police department if you are imbibing too much at one of the local establishments and you cannot drive home or shouldn't drive home and ask for permission to do that. It is merely a letter that you place on your dashboard and it will be honored by, by our, you know, law enforcement. So please do, do know that that exists as an option and please use it if need be. And I would also like to say that I would support the staff's recommendation for option B in this situation because if we provide the parking overnight, it may just help for the people who park in your neighborhood and leave their car there, for lack of anywhere else to leave it.
Thank you. Renee, others on the council? Larry?
You know, I think we're going to have to look into the parking permit suggestion and, you know, my feeling is, you know, instead of waiting until we do a regional sort of meta-plan, master plan, it might be worth considering doing a pilot project in one of the neighborhoods just to see how it works. Although Inyo and then, what's the street right behind the theater?
Mono.
Is it Mono? You know, definitely are, they are parking facilities for downtown. So, I mean, I could see where if we did it in Inyo and didn't do it on Mono, that, you know, it might bleed over in, in an unfair way, but I mean, it's, it's really, it, I, I know there's going to be some wrinkles, but it's not really rocket science as far as setting up a permit system for the neighborhood residents, maybe without doing a whole downtown master plan, so that you would start from the outskirts and work your way in. I think the idea of allowing people to park overnight is a good one and maybe that's something that the bars could encourage people to do.
Yeah.
Because we don't want, you know, we're getting $11,000 a year in a parking ticket revenue. That really, that risk benefit really doesn't add up to one DUI accident. And it doesn't even add up to one DUI citation for a drunk driver. You know, so I don't really think the $11,000 in parking revenue is really, you know, something that should be driving our conversation. It's long overdue really to provide overnight parking for patrons of the downtown establishment. So I do, I agree with Renee that we should move forward with that. But I think as the council moves forward, you know, maybe we should address those immediate adjacent neighborhoods and try to get some parking plans in place for them, you know, and just, just see how it works.
Thank you. John?
Yeah. Yeah, I do, I do think that the parking plan that a lot of people on open time spoke to and you just spoke to, Larry, it is part of a, it's a bigger picture sort of thing and I think it's more regional than just Inyo and Mono. I mean, it's, they're going to move right over to Napa or Main Court or Dominga. You know, I mean, it's, it's all the same walkable zone and I, unfortunately, I think you do need to count, you know, that whole side of downtown and who knows, maybe they'll finally cross Sir Francis Drake and then it'll be a problem over on Taylor too. But basically the, the downtown area, and I can, I can speak to leaving, leaving just outside of the downtown area on the Bonham Scenic, you know, we get every weekend a whole line of people parking their cars and riding their bikes at Tamaracho or whatever it is. It's, it's kind of a town line problem, but I think that's a different, in my neighborhood is a different problem than the one that we're talking about downtown. I agree that number two is a good approach because it's not just on Sunday and it's, it's kind of a, number two is basically allowing parking overnight. And it's, thank you Renee for pointing out that our, our policy of basically, put a note on the dashboard. If you're drunk to drive, it's better to stay off the road. Put a note on your dashboard, you're not going to get a ticket. But having that a- But having that a policy for people in the neighborhood that they can park in the parcade or mono lot, I think is a good start, and it's kind of a stopgap measure. It doesn't deal with 72-hour parkers, or whatever you want to call them. That's a different sort of problem. The...you know, so we've basically got three levels. We've got the immediate need for a stopgap measure, which is right now, and I think we can just do that tomorrow by, you know, saying it's okay to park overnight in those I don't think it's...I think it would be a disservice to this issue, rolling it into the whole downtown center plan conversation, because there's a lot of facets to that, and parking is one of the facets. But there's a whole lot of things, and some of them, people feel strongly about, and I think that the parking issue is really mostly a problem-solving issue for us, and I think, yeah, permits, or however we look at it, there's a bunch of different ways of dealing with it. That's a good way to do it, and if we start it downtown, then we can make it work in other areas that are also impacted by parking. I mean, you know, I...as you get farther away from downtown, parking is more and more scarce because there are windy roads and they're narrow, and it, you know, you talk to people way up on the top of Ridge, it's the same deal. I mean, they're...they know exactly how big each car is and where each one's got to park, and somebody visits and parks in the wrong place, they're taking two spots, and everybody gets all upset, and it's, you know, there's a whole pecking order, and, you know, it's a way to get people's rankles up, you know, talking about parking. But, you know, let's start small with a pilot program in downtown, and, you know.
David?
Part of the conversation is like thinking about this like cancer. And I don't think so. We should be trying to put a tourniquet around a bleeding limb. My recommendation, Garrett, at Mr. Ardito's convenience, even if it's after business hours or on a weekend, depending on his work schedule, I would sit down with him and come up with a quick suite of ideas that can be implemented that will address holistically the problem. I don't think that he and his community should suffer longer term while we socially manipulate the good ideas that are here, which I think are piecemeal. I think his ideas are more direct, specific, and I think are directed at his neighborhood, which he knows better than any of us could possibly ever know. That would be my recommendation. I think that you've gone...staff has gone partway down the street. I think Mr. Ardito could take us down the street and recommend, in whole or in part, some of the ideas that he has, some of the ideas we have, and we'll put a halt to this in advance of our looking at it holistically at a time that I can't even imagine, a year or two down the road.
Renee, you had another quick thought?
No, I'm just wondering, would it be appropriate? I would like to ask staff to look into what that pilot would look like. What is a realistic...and I would love to work on that. Because what's a realistic number of roads that would be directly impacted, and how can we use Mr. Ardito's suggestions and make it slightly larger? Because I do agree that there are those immediate streets, there's Dominga, there's Inyo, there's Napa, there's Mono, who are impacted directly by what happens in our commercial downtown. So can we move forward by choosing an option here to handle something if everyone agrees to do that? And then direct staff or work together to look at what that first step would be in terms of creating that pilot?
Okay, so a couple of things. I think we've got a couple of things on the table. Option two appears to have positive reception from three of the council members. Larry suggested a pilot. It sounds like Renee and John are thinking that's a good idea. Also, I think...and David, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you suggesting that Garrett sit down with Mr. Ardito, I think somehow sort of fits into that pilot idea as well, which are not in your head, so I like that. I have a couple of things that I would like to say as well. So...but Garrett, did you want to answer first, or do you...go ahead.
Okay. So obviously, as staff will implement, whether the council would like to implement. First of all, I just wanted to point out, though, I appreciate Mr. Ardito's letter. He obviously did some homework on the program, but the actual solution implementation, there are so many programs out there, I'm sure we could come up one that works fine. That's not so much the issue. The issue is, okay, what's the problem we're trying to address? One was the social behavior. That's one thing, we talked about that. One is overnight parking. And then the other is timed parking. Those are two different things, overnight parking, timed parking. Overnight parking, maybe that doesn't have an impact into downtown. Timed parking, I think, is something you really are going to want to take a closer look at, because two hours, four hours, that does make a difference to neighborhood. Whether or not that frees up a space for residents coming back after work, I couldn't tell you. Two hours just might be deemed the peak time, that people in downtown might need to use the space. On the weekends, yes, it's true, we're a bicyclist community. That's kind of what we're known for, people do park. If you put in timed parking, which is something to look at, then where do they park? Do they figure out somewhere else? Do they go to another neighborhood? So those are kind of larger issues to take a look at. We can always develop a pilot program, we may incorporate some things that are in here. It's just something that it's going...to do it right, I think you really need to have input from the community. There has to be a process.
Well, here's what I'm going to suggest, so just to...I've got two things. First of all, option two, I think, appeals to the vast majority of the council, and I would add to that. Now, I'm not sure if the rest of the council would be supportive of this. Well, you talked about increased police presence on the Inyo-Mono area, which also includes...what is the street? Pacheco? Is that...yeah. Increasing police presence in that area, really monitoring...my suggestion, which this is where it may not be suitable for others, is to not just mark a car that it has to be moved in 72 hours, but include a financial penalty if we can do that. So that might also deter those folks who are just moving at 72 hours. Also, if we can be more diligent when we mark those cars to go back in the 72 hours and get them towed if they're not moved. And I look at that as, you know, we have a lot of parking issues in the town, but we've had this brought to us, and this definitely is an area where I think they get the first sort of round of parkers, because it's closer. I would also say, as far as this pilot project, I think it brings a lot of benefits. A couple of things is that we're not putting off the very comprehensive, holistic, that'll have a lot of parts to it, that will bring a lot of people out. One of the benefits of the pilot is we tested in a small area, and that also is a lesson learned for us, as far as before we undertake this comprehensive approach, we can see how this works. And I would suggest a pilot for a time-limited amount of time. But I would say, going off, working with Mr. Ardito, I think Renee offered her time to participate, working out a pilot that has some or parts of Mr. Ardito's approach. I would also suggest, I somewhat disagree, that I think we should keep it limited to this small area rather than expanding it. And I think that that pilot, with its different components, should come back to the council. That...not that we want you to go off and resolve something without any public comment, but I think the idea of a pilot is truly that. We're going to test it out, and then it will also be very helpful for her...for us when we undertake this comprehensive approach. So I would propose that we...and we can't do option two overnight, because...we can't start that right away because that requires a resolution, so that would have to come back to the council.
No, the resolution's attached.
Oh, it is?
Yes, you just have to adopt it.
Okay.
So you can do B immediately. If I understand correctly, we do cite the vehicle after 72 hours.
All you do is mark it, and they have to move it within 72 hours.
Right. But if they don't, we put a citation on, after 72 hours. But you're talking about putting one on sooner. Is that the...
Is that...no, I'm saying at the time that you mark them, you're saying that there is a citation with it, that if it is not moved in 72 hours, they would have to pay a financial penalty in addition to being towed?
Yeah, that's correct. We issue a citation when it's towed.
With a financial penalty?
Yeah, whatever the fine is. I don't know what the fine is off the top of my head.
Okay, but we do have that. All right, so it sounds like that's already in play, but I think increasing the police presence, getting them out there within 72 hours, so that we're not sitting there another 48 hours. And let's work on that. So I think I would entertain a motion for...well, I'm going to make a...throw out what my suggestion is, is I think we're liking up option two. I'm not sure about including the...we would have to do an ordinance subsequent on the RVs and trailers, and I suggest that we hold off on that. But then I would direct staff to work on a pilot project that would come back to the council. And I would suggest we do that probably for February, because we've got a lot coming up in January. So I would like someone to make a motion. Mayor, I should make that motion.
Wait, I just want to ask a question, because I'm looking at Garrett's face.
Wait.
So in terms of...
Wait, did I look enthusiastic?
I know, I think that creating a pilot, it may be a bigger enterprise than having it brought to us by February, only in that I did resonate with what you said about, we really want to do this well. So I think there's probably enough to consider, that we may need to come back to council once prior to...I'm just not sure that February, I won't be that much grayer by February.
How about this? It sounds like we really...staff should come back to you with how we see this process working. We should come back to you with that sooner, and then we could start whatever process we adopted sooner, because I think for residential program, which we can do on a pilot basis, and there could be different components that we have, part of what I need to do is try to figure out what that means from a staffing level, because obviously, there needs to be a database, we have to issue permits, we have to track the permits, we need to send letters out. And so the wider the area, the more work that is. And so there's some issues concerned with that, and you just need to know what they are. It's not that we can't do it, it's just that that's the issue. And two is, I really...I think I need direction on the timed parking. Is that something council wants us to take a look at, whether it's four hours or two hours during a day? I understand you're going to...you might...you're going to go for, oh, no overnight parking unless you have a residential permit, but it's the timed parking.
Well, I mean, what I'm concerned about is enforcement, I mean, as one piece of concern.
That's what we'll have to evaluate.
Because two-hour parking during the daytime with all the bikers that come in and our police force on the weekend, I'm not sure it's realistic, and once people find out that things aren't enforced, then it discourages change of behavior.
Well, what we can do is report back to you, because I could tell you right now, if we do this, but yes, we will have to hire a part-time, another traffic control officer, because otherwise, we couldn't enforce it. So that's something we could look at. Some way, it wouldn't be that expensive, but it's just things that you need to think about. The key thing is the timing, how long time. And so what we could do is either in January, if we could, I don't know, this might be ambitious, or February, no, later in February, we can come back with just the issues, how things would work, and then you could provide us additional direction.
Yes, let's do that. So in between that time, maybe you could meet with Mr. Ardito and talk more about this. And so I would say do not come back in January with it. We have a lot on our plate as far as moving forward with a new council member, and I think just including the pros and cons of timed, those kinds of things, and then we can provide you more appropriate direction. So is that helpful, Garrett?
Yes, that is.
So with that, I think we should make a motion as how to move forward tonight.
So I would move that we adopt a resolution allowing overnight parking in the parcade and mono parking lots, and also direct staff to come back with a outline for neighborhood...for a pilot neighborhood parking permit plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Councilmember Bragman made the motion, second. Vice Mayor Goddard. Motion passes. Now, we are going to quickly take up the special meeting, and then we will recalibrate the...actually, let's recalibrate the agenda now, but we will do the special meeting next. So let's take a look. I think that we should move item 10 and 11 to the January meeting. I think we should also include number 14 in the January meeting, and I know that item 12 is critical, and item 13 is important because of timing issues. So...
I agree. There isn't anything we have to do with 10 in terms of the update to the housing element?
It's just a status report.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor with the recalibration?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Special meeting, and unfortunately, I didn't print that out, I thought we was going to have it, but I know what it's about, so we can move...if you have a copy. No, she has one. So let's move forward, and this is a discussion and consideration of proposed CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, smart meter decision. Vice Mayor, well, now no longer Vice Mayor, Councilmember Bragman, and I suggest that Councilmember Bragman do the staff report.
Basically, it's been three years, and I think we're actually going on four years since the whole...the discovery of Pacific Gas and Electric's plan to install wireless smart meters throughout the town of Fairfax, some 4,000 meters, I think it was. And also discovered that Pacific Gas Electric had installed transmission devices in the public right-of-way, I believe, without getting building permits. We litigated that. It's not really a formal court litigation. It is...it's administrative litigation in the California Public Utilities Commission, which is a somewhat opaque bureaucracy in which judges appointed by the various commissioners are assigned cases by those commissioners. And in this case, Chairman Peavy, who is set to step down, assigned the case to Judge Kip Yipagawa some...three years ago. It's taken three years to get a decision, even though the rules state that decisions should be timely made, and I think the time limit is usually somewhere in the vicinity of 12 months, but this, for some reason, took almost over two years. The decision by the administrative law judge basically was against the petition, and essentially made findings that local... made findings that local jurisdictions do not have authority to opt-out as a group or as a jurisdiction, and that charging fees to opt-out is not a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So obviously, two big issues for the town of Fairfax. Right now, that, this decision by Judge Kip, I don't want to butcher her name again, Kipagawa, has not been adopted by the Public Utilities Commission. So before this becomes an actual binding decision by the California Public Utilities Commission, it's got to go to the full California Public Utilities Commission. I don't know when that's going to happen. I don't know how it's going to happen. But I know that for a lot of the residents in Fairfax, the decision does not resolve the issues that we raised, whether it's the privacy issue, whether it's the discrimination issue, whether it's the local control of our public rights-of-way issue. You know, none of this was really resolved favorably for the town of Fairfax, the County of Marin, the Town of Ross, County of Santa Cruz, and a lot of other petitioners who joined Fairfax. This wasn't just a Fairfax issue. And as one of the speakers mentioned, there's many other communities throughout California and throughout the nation who have expressed similar concerns over privacy, health, and discrimination towards that portion of the population that is sensitive to electromagnetic frequencies. So really, the memorandum, the items put on the agenda, really to notify the residents that are watching or that are going to be reading our agenda, that this is, this is what is coming, and we need to deal with it as a community. You know, for one, I think the town should write a letter to the California Public Utilities Commission expressing its concern over the proposed decision, much the same as the concerns raised by Sky Ranch. I mean, this is something we should do. We've already, we've already taken a formal position on this by passing an ordinance which effectively placed a moratorium on these devices on the rollout of the smart meter program here in Fairfax. So I think sending a letter of our position, reiterating our position, asking them to help us maintain our moratorium, at least for a given amount of time, would be a good start. And I think at some point, one of the council members is going to have to pick up the ball and start talking to the government relations person at PG&E to see if we can work with PG&E to maintain our status. I've, I've always felt that it would be interesting for us to maintain the moratorium, in a sense, as the canary in the coalmine, to see whether it affects electrical usage or not. So, I mean, I think it would be sort of a beta test of this whole smart meter program to maintain the moratorium here in Fairfax, to see whether or not there's any savings that are accrued by doing time-of-use billing. Because that's really where this is going to be going, is time-of-use billing. So that if you use your appliances, whatever, during peak time hours, you're going to be charged more money. So in other words, the utility will make more money on the same product. Now, that supposedly will incentivize people to use less power at that time, but as has been previously pointed out, a lot of people don't have a choice when they use their electrical appliances. They may have employment situations, they may have health conditions that require them to use their appliances when they do. And there's, there's a big privacy issue that has not been addressed by the Public Utilities Commission. And there's a big public safety issue as to whether these devices are secure. So not sure what direction the council is going to want to go with this, but I think it's something that's definitely going to be dumped in your lap here in the next couple of months. So I just want to make the transition to someone or to the rest of the council. I can continue to work with Jim Tobin, who's been representing us in the matter before the Public Utilities Commission. I will continue to lobby the Public Utilities Commission. But I think the council is going to need to start deliberating over this in the near future. So, thank you.
Councilmember comment?
Yeah, I just want to know, do you have a file of sorts that could be left in a, in a way that we could then use?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, and so does Jim Tobin. So Jim Tobin is the attorney that has been representing all the various jurisdictions, County of Marin, Town of Ross. So he certainly has a very good handle on the case. And, you know, I don't think there's any immediate legal action to be taken now. This is not a final, final decision. But certainly, when the chairman of the California Public Utilities Commission appoints a judge, keeps the judge on the case for close to three years, you got to think that that commissioner approves of the way it's being handled, and it may well be adopted. So at some point, we've got to start lobbying for our position and to let the Public Utilities Commission know that, you know, there's a community that's concerned about this. And I don't think it's, we will be standing alone.
Others on the council?
Well, certainly sobering and interesting, especially this many years after the, after the original thing. Yeah, especially with Peavy being so connected with PG&E, it kind of seems like a back-scratching, kind of, it calls that into question, whether, you know, whether the outcome was predetermined or not. But yeah, it bears paying attention to, and thank you.
I was wondering if we might, just to be proactive about this, find out who the other jurisdictions are that have taken a similar, a similar path, so that we have that. If we don't have Larry really driving it and being so on top of it, I'm just wanting to make sure that we-
I can get, I'll get you that information.
It's a combined case.
It's County of Marin.
It's a combined case.
Yeah, there's many, many, there's many, many petitioners. Yeah, I mean, that's-
And folks that you've worked with before, and?
Yeah, I mean, we have all, there's, there have been many different parties that have filed petitions. They're not, not everybody is in our petition. The CPUC combined a lot of the petitions into one master case for this judge. So I can certainly get you a list of all the different parties and keep you apprised of where this case is going to go at the, at the CPUC. So I'm happy to kind of keep you in the loop. But we have, we do have an ordinance that we passed to put in place this moratorium, and for good reason. And there's legitimate concerns, there's, you know, and it's sort of really coalesced as a moratorium because of all the different concerns. It wasn't just health, it wasn't just safety, it wasn't just privacy. It was a lot of different things. And underneath it all, like a lot of the things we do, it was about maintaining our independence and our jurisdiction over our public rights-of-way. Because the deployment of this system uses our public right-of-way, which, if you recall, our, I think, when we looked at a financial analysis of the town, that is our most valuable asset, are the streets and rights-of-way in this town. And John is going to pick it up, hopefully, I don't know, tonight with, with, with the pedestrian paths.
Yeah, we just continued that item, but stay tuned on January.
It's a very, it's a very, this is, this is our biggest asset. So it's, it's a legitimate thing underneath all the other various concerns. It's like, can a local jurisdiction police its own public rights-of-way or not? So, you know, it does present some pretty legitimate legal issues that are worth considering and worth our deliberations.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you're still going to be involved working with Jim Tobin on this matter?
You know, I will be working with Jim. There's other plaintiffs in the case. And I will certainly be available to you at, as, as the case goes forward.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open it up to the public. I think, Alexander, you've been waiting for this? Sorry, it's getting late. You've been very patient.
Alexander Binick, I'm probably too tired to be very coherent. And I'm going to ask, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Detox Institute for five minutes in case I need more than three. I'm not sure how much I have to say. First of all, just to add a few more details, there, when the decision, they're called PDs or proposed decisions, and they finally, after postponing and postponing for months and years, they finally came out with those, oh, maybe a month ago or less, and then there's been an opportunity for people, for parties to respond. Parties who were already, were involved with the case officially to send in responses and responses to responses and so on. So that's been going on, and that's, I think that's just about an endpoint now. Tomorrow morning will be the first opportunity for the actual commission, the five commissioners, to discuss the proposed decisions. And I should say decisions because they're identical, except that the administrative law judge proposed that the, the opt-out fees be kept, the initial fee and ongoing fees be kept exactly the same for the indefinite future as it's been till now, which was supposedly a pilot or provisional approach, just continue that, and made some bones about justifying it. It really wasn't justified well, nor was anything else. And then Commissioner Peavy, who's been supervising the case, had assigned this judge, and has been involved from the very beginning behind closed doors, and they consult all the time. And he decided, as his last act, that he would come out with a proposed decision, which is identical, except that I believe that the fees would be imposed, the opt-out fees, for only, I think, three years, and then they would drop off. Otherwise, it's the same thing. And so tomorrow, these will be discussed tomorrow morning, and then when the commission meets again in two weeks, they will be voting on it. So it's coming up very soon. And I, I think that's the last meeting that President Peavy will be attending. It's the end of his term, and who knows, we'll be getting after that. I'm holding my nose. But anyway, the track record of the CPUC is that proposed decisions invariably get adopted. There might be some little tweaks, but I certainly would not expect anything significant, this would not be voted down, there's no way. And the, as Laurie mentioned, all the aspects of what Fairfax and the affiliated jurisdictions had requested, and all the other parties, each, you know, they came in with all various aspects of the thing, and all of that basically was refuted and the status quo is being maintained. ADA doesn't apply, we can't deal with health issues, and on and on again. And there were things that people wrote very long briefs about and so on, with a lot of background and a lot of documentation about not only the effects on people who have disability, but what about the people who live in, first of all, commercial properties, but also residential properties, people who live in multi-unit properties and perhaps have 20, or I know someone who has almost 50 of these against the wall, and her mother has gotten so sick, they, they sleep out in the cold in an RV every night. And they're, they've been hoping to move to Fairfax from San Diego. I mean, I don't know, I couldn't assure her that things would remain safe here in Fairfax. But anyway, that's where that stands. The, none of these things were really taken into account in the decision, and that's where it stands. I think as far as where Fairfax is concerned, we do, unlike perhaps any other jurisdiction that I know of in the state, we have this pre-existing ordinance about if, I don't know, that related just to cellular transmissions, I forget exactly how it was worded, but saying that utilities had to come to the town and, I think, get permission to both put things up on the streets, et cetera. And I can confirm that PG&E never did that. They said, well, our jurisdiction is CPUC, we don't have to deal with Fairfax. I think the fact that this council was very courageous in first writing a letter to CPUC, and then following it up with the moratorium for a year. It was proposed originally for six months, and then it was agreed to for a year, and continuing it for another year. And I think that may have happened a couple of times. The last time, I believe it was open-ended. It wasn't just a time-limited moratorium. That that has been in place. The townspeople have come, they have all these so-called informational meetings that PG&E had, and the PUC, people here and so on. And the townspeople educated themselves and people from the surrounding communities and said, that's a lot of baloney, and we don't want them here. And those things together with the fact that Fairfax, unlike any other jurisdiction I know, the council said, yes, police department, we want you to enforce our moratorium ordinance. So if installers are coming and the, the residents don't want them there, they can call the police, and the police will come out. As far as the county's concerned, the sheriff is independently elected, and he said, CPUC jurisdiction, I'm not going to deal with that. But I think that's a lot of the reason that Fairfax is still largely uninstalled, where people don't want them. What's going to happen next, assuming that on the 18th this is passed? I think that barring some kind of useful discussion with PG&E, their publicity continues to be so bad, they may not want to risk more confrontation and more bad vibes in Marin County, coming out of Fairfax, not just from the council but from the community. So they might decide to keep the status quo. Or they might say, okay, we've got our rubber stamp now, and we're going to go ahead and start installing all of our Fairfax. And then it will be a question of whether Fairfax will continue to say, we're going to send out police people and say, you have to leave. You know, there's no financial penalty at this point, even for their putting up the, the big antennas out on the streets, we can't really impose any financial penalty and make it stick. But we can make life difficult for them. And that's worked so far, and I hope the council will continue to have steel in your spines around things like that, that you can do, that we can all do together going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alexander. Michael?
Hi, council. I'm hoping that I can learn something else. And I've certainly heard some safety issues, but one of the issues that I haven't heard is how the information is encrypted. Because it would not be that difficult, as we all know, to hack something. And I, for one, what I did for many years is I'd build databases, and I would, kind of like your FICO scores, look for commonalities and stuff with people, and then I would selectively pull out a group and identify them and contact them. So it also would- And I, for one, what I did for many years is I'd build databases, and I would, kind of like your FICO scores, look for commonalities and stuff with people, and then I would selectively pull out a group and identify them and contact them. So it also would give control to a few people that could identify who they wanted to knock off and take away their power, for whatever reason. At the same time, when you have some information being transmitted up, it'd be very easy to drive by and identify that signal, and you could, from 20 feet away, 50 feet away, identify somebody's home. So you could look at their consumption or energy use. You could then watch this on a meter, and you could determine at different times when that energy use is spiking, you'd know in someone's home or not, so you'd know the house to break into. So what I'm asking for is, along the lines of safety, has there been any sort of discussion about what kind of platform they use for encryption? You know, is it like a PKI? Is it an RSA? Is there a discussion?
There's definitely been discussion about encryption. There's also been discussion about building a data collection center in Southern California. So the whole privacy issue is, has not been resolved. And the university-level analysis, there's a law professor from Berkeley, Deirdre Mulligan, I think her name is, who did a study on this, said, you can't bolt on privacy. Privacy's got to be built into the system. It's got to be integrated into the system. And that hasn't been done. So there's a lot of concerns about privacy and security of the system, and concerns about what happens to the data. Who does the data belong to? How can it be used? How can it be, can it be sold? Can it be, you know, can it be used for marketing? All those issues. So they're big, they're big issues, and it's not just smart meters. There's, you know, we're dealing with this, you know, with anything from this to NSA. You know, how do you protect people's privacy? And it has not, it's not resolved, and it hasn't been built in into the system. So there's a lot of unanswered questions about privacy and security of the system.
Michael, I think we're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay, real quick. Some of your concerns of the privacy, they have been defined in a law called the GLB since 2000, and it clearly states about the collection of information and what you can do for marketing. And this is why we get our little disclaimers for our banks and credit card statements. It's pertaining to the GLB. So some of that, sorry.
Some of it has been, for sure.
Okay, so let's wrap this up. Other folks, Sarah, if you could kind of keep it brief, we're running kind of late.
I know. I'm going to try and keep it brief. I missed number eight. I had to leave for a while, and I'd like to tie a little bit of that in, and it pertains to this. So it's tired, and I'm getting late, so I'm going to try and be as coherent as unusual. I want to start by saying thank you to Larry for time, energy, work you've put into this. And you wouldn't know it from all of us here tonight, except for maybe the millions watching on their couches at home, where it's a good place to be. But in the past, this room has been packed, and there have been a lot of very full discussion, argument, whatever you want to call them. So the reason I want to go back to number eight, which was the divestiture of fossil fuels, had a discussion with someone over that. Basically, it comes down to education and what kind of beliefs and attitudes and assumptions are. And one person's whole attitude about divestiture was like, okay, and let's not use any electricity in town, let's not use any gas in town, let's divest all of our use of all of it. And it was being rather sarcastic. And we can't get there from here. It's like, you know, we can use less, we can conserve, but it's just kind of the attitude and the conversation, and that person isn't any more right than the other side, perhaps. But I personally don't want to be a guinea pig. And I feel like our Bass-Aquard system is making us all into guinea pigs. It's like, things aren't proven to be safe or secure, but they thrust on us. Trust us. Trust us for Diablo Canyon, trust us for Fukushima, trust us for fracking. Oh, yeah, back to number eight, is we can use gas for our heating, because it's cheap. But how much of our gas is coming from fracking, which is wiping out our aquifers and any security for water? It's, anyway, rights-of-way service agreements, those have changed. Those are all set up in the 20s, 30s, 40s. And smart meters or wireless technology was never even envisioned back then. And for us to have something that's going to piggyback, and there's a lot of information, and I've only got a small mouth and a small brain to kick it out, but how much information can you kick out of a smart meter or cell phone and tie them all together and have EMFs or electrosmog that we're adding into the systems that our bodies and our nervous systems aren't built for? It's like, we're reacting to things, and we don't know that we're reacting to them, but they're affecting us. It's in the soup that we're living in. I'm sorry, I'm, I'd like PG&E to show us the data of all the supposed benefits of smart meters, for example. It's like, what are the benefits? People have talked about the security issues, the privacy issues. Privacy, it's a big one. I don't want someone knowing it's like when I'm home, when I'm not, what I'm using, what appliances. And it's all been hawked on as a secure, an energy-saving device that we're going to all, in real time, go onto our computers or something and know, like, when we're driving down the car, how much, driving down the highway, how much energy we're using at home. What a bunch of bullshit. I support resisting the judgment. I wonder what it's going to take to challenge it and appeal it, how to continue it. I don't want to be a guinea pig, and I feel like we're becoming guinea pigs more and more in every area of our corporate lives, where all that matters is money and profit.
Sarah, we need to wrap it up.
Yeah, I understand. It all comes down to money and profit.
Thank you. So any other speakers on this item? Peter?
Yes, thank you. Peter Lax, 206 Cascade Drive. First, I'd like to echo my gratitude for you, Larry, for fighting the good fight and taking the fight onto a playing field, which is a little slanted in favor of the utilities. And I think it's very telling that this decision makes a finding that the, quote, the utilities greatly overestimated the cost for the opt-out service, but they still upheld it. It's pretty significant. It's $10 a month, $120 a year. That would really make it beyond the reach of many people to, you know, be able to opt out. And this shouldn't be a luxury item, really, but, you know, appreciate you taking the fight there. I had a question. The status of the moratorium, though, and I don't know if this is so much a question as a comment, that that doesn't seem to have anything to do with this decision, if I understand it correctly. This is just about the opt-out pricing, correct?
It also made a finding against local jurisdictions opting out as governmental entities. So it implicitly overrules our moratorium.
I see. So PG&E would have to take some kind of a legal action, then, to overturn the moratorium in light of this, or?
I think they would, I think they would use this as a means of overriding the local ordinance.
I see. Well, it's, I think the moratorium is still worth, you know, maintaining and fighting over. And I think it does, if nothing else, PG&E may back off from it, if nothing else for the, because of the bad publicity and so forth. And so, you know, I guess have to wait and see what the next step is by PG&E, but, you know, I would encourage a town to maintain the moratorium as much as possible, as long as possible, as long as it's feasible to do so. And again, thanks, thanks for fighting the good fight on this.
Thank you, Peter. So any other speakers on this? I'll bring it back to the council.
I would just ask, at some point, that maybe the mayor consider, or the council consider authorizing the mayor to send a letter to the CPUC, just expressing our chagrin at the proposed decision, and to, you know, request that they consider some kind of a modification of the decision to allow ordinances that were passed prior to the, this whole process, for those ordinances to be maintained, something to that effect.
Reactions from the council?
It's, yeah, it's, I guess it's a motion, yeah.
I would second that.
Just one point of clarification. None of us have been integrally involved in this, and I wonder if you'd be willing to perhaps take a stab at that letter as, as a private citizen.
Sure.
And, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
So with that, motion was made by Councilmember Bragman.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Second.
Second by John Reed. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes for a letter, and I think we should be somewhat timely on the letter, given that the 18th is coming up.
Yep. I will do. Sure.
Moving on, just on the recalibration of our agenda, I think we should dispense with council member reports this month, unless we really feel it's incredibly critical. And after we're done, we'll see if there's any critical items that the town manager wants to report on. So with that, let's move on to Agenda Item 12, consideration of process to appoint candidate, et cetera. And Garrett, would you do the staff report?
Sure. Briefly, you may recall back in April 2013, the council actually adopted an ordinance number 769, which required that the council, within 60 days, either call for election or replace the vacant council member seat, to replace vacant council member seat or appoint someone to fill that seat for the remainder of the term. With Councilmember Bragman's recent election to the Water Board, we anticipate his resignation will be effective December 8th, is what we did in the staff report. And given that his term expires in 2015, and the cost of a special election is probably $40,000 to $50,000, where the staff is recommending that the council choose to fill the remainder of the term as opposed to calling for a special election. Now, what we've done here is we've attached to the staff report what we used last time in 2013 to fill the two vacant seats. The process for interviews and selection, the application, and actual job description. And just as, if you may recall what happened last time, in terms of the process, we allowed, council allowed all the applicants to make a presentation at the meeting, with time allocated for questions. Then after all the applicants finished with their presentation, then the council voted and narrowed it down. I believe each voted for two people, and that narrowed it down to list the finalists. And then at that time, finalists were called back, asked them more questions. And then at that time, the council could have chose to make a selection, or they could defer decision to another meeting. 2013 has deferred to another meeting. And so in terms of timing, 60-day period expires February 6. So within that timeframe, the council, you have two meetings, January 14th and February 4th. Now, we have no idea how many applications you will receive, so the council might want to keep in mind, just tentatively schedule a special meeting for the 28th, if you need that, to interview candidates. And really, what we're asking tonight is to be able to start the application process and make the applications due on January 5th, and then your first round of interviews will happen January 14th. So that's what's before you this evening.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Comments?
Before.
Just have a quick question. Number 11, in terms, oh, sorry, in terms of the process and interviews and selection, it says that if council makes a decision, the newly appointed council member will take his or her oath of office at the next council meeting. Did we not take our oath at the meeting at which we were chosen?
You did, but I believe they just deferred that, I thought it was they deferred your decision. So when they interviewed you that one meeting, then the next meeting, they made that decision, and you took your oath at that time.
Yeah. She's pointing out if the council makes a decision. So I think she's suggesting that we make the oath of office when we make the decision.
Sure, that's fine.
That's it.
Other comments? Okay, with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to the council.
And I would move to authorize staff to begin accepting the applications per the recommendation in the staff report.
I'd second that.
Okay, before we go for the vote, I suggest we also schedule the tentative, the meeting for January 28th, Town Manager. I think we should do that. And so, motion, Reed, Weinsdorf.
I'm sorry, what day of the week is the 28th? Wednesday?
Wednesday. Motion, Weinsdorf, second, Reed, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes, and we will schedule that second meeting on the 28th. Let's for sure get that done. Okay, moving on to Item 13, appoint a town council member.
Yeah, there is MCCMC that evening.
I think we can miss MCC.
I'm fine.
Bring the meeting earlier. Bring that up later.
That's true.
You could do it earlier. You have time to figure it out, I think.
I think we can see what happens on January 14th and make a decision, but let's schedule that so we have it on the books.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out, John. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13, appointing a town council member to the Zero Waste Committee. Michelle, can you do a quick staff report?
Because you're thinking about looking at your garbage rates, and because Councilmember Bragman has been on the Zero Waste Committee with Renee, Vice Mayor Goddard, also known as Renee, you need two council members on the Zero Waste Committee, and the Zero Waste Committee needs to meet to, before we can move forward with any kind of garbage rate increase.
I'm willing to assign, appoint myself or put my name on the hat.
Volunteer.
I second that. Good.
Yeah, volunteer, thank you. It's getting late.
And there was a second part to that staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's getting late for me, too. And that is, if you turn it over, on the back, you'll see all the other council member committee assignments. And I noted on the side column on the right, the alternates on Councilmember Bragman's committees, who would ideally make sure they attend the meetings.
Yes, I believe I'm the alternate for both of those. I'm just not sure when MTA meets, but yes. And I'm sure Mr. Egger can still be the alternate on Ross Valley Paramedic Authority.
And additionally, there are some, oh, sorry.
We're going to do that in February, though. The rest is.
We, yeah, the idea is that once you, you would probably want to do your annual review of assignments once you have appointed a new council member.
Right, so we'll do that in February. All right. So with that, the motion passes that Kohler is assigned to Zero Waste Committee with Vice Mayor Goddard, also known as Renee. Quickly, do you have any critical items, Town Manager, to report on?
I just want to thank the previous mayor for working with staff in the challenging year, like, looking forward to working with the new mayor, and definitely want to thank Councilmember Bragman for hiring me two years ago.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, but can we have that first? And then I want to adjourn. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Yes. Who will give a motion to adjourn?
In memory.
Well, I'm going to do that. Would you want to second, John?
Sure. Second.
Okay, so we'd like to adjourn in memory of Frank Lena French-Moore. Her nickname was Pinky. That is Jim Moore's mother, who passed away recently, so just adjourn in her honor. Thank you all.